President is a.
Okay, we're off. Sorry about that.
Let's call us being north before we get out of here.
Too late.
Yeah.
Minutes of reports received and filed?
None.
It's like another day.
Liaison reports.
Yeah, I know. We just start off this morning with all nine.
There we go.
Just keep going.
Just say no and it takes away all their.
Everybody will get up and walk out.
Is that all we gotta do?
I wonder if she's gonna buy you this because she does tomorrow.
No, see? No, no.
What were we doing?
We're doing their upcoming meetings and events, liaison reports.
We've got HBO Christmas tonight, that's our Police Management District meeting. We've got today. We've got a meeting tomorrow too, don't we?
Yes.
Cool.
And you're gonna do Warren.
Okay. I don't have anything today. We've got a meeting tomorrow, right?
Yep. Friday, we've got Renegades, Center of Blunts Listing Post, 10 to 11. Saturday, we've got Capitol Gala, Black Tide.
Capitol Gala?
Yeah, for the arts. Good touch.
Yeah. Busy.
Okay.
Gaylord's this weekend.
No, the Capitol Gala.
Capitol Arts.
Oh.
Sam does everything. He's a sucker.
Are you ready? Okay.
Einstein, make it representative. He'll be there. He was at Capitol Gala last night, so.
Crazy, they can come up to the end.
We should.
Bit of Warren.
Hey, we got liaison reports.
Yes.
Okay.
You got off that all done?
Uh, no.
Oh.
So, I'm gonna just, uh, the RPC had their annual report. I'll just let you guys take a look at this. There's some pretty good information in there. And we received some of that, so I'll, I'll just sit that on your desk when you guys can move it around. And then, uh, we had our EDAC meeting at RPC yesterday. And, uh, the Department of Finance Board has some programs out there that counties and cities can apply for. Um, and you can get some tax credits, so certain organizations, if they wanna do something, you can actually sell those tax credits. Uh, it's got an EDAC, I can just let you guys look at this presentation too, but, um, so if there's some organizations out there that wanna do that, they have to apply for it, but, uh, they need to get funding. This is a red flag for them to get more funding than they would, uh, so like the, uh, well, Special Olympics, uh, the city did something through this, and then, uh, they were able to leverage those tax credits so people would get more. So, uh, but, so there's, so the big program, they have ten, $10 million a year that they can do in these tax credits, and they can do an additional $15 million, so they could do up to $25 million or so, so, anyway, I'll pass that around too, so. Okay?
Okay. Anything else?
Nope.
Anything else? Okay, bid award of the 2015-38 medical supplies.
You guys have a whole lot of numbers in front of you. Uh, a lot of the items on there are alternate. Um, there's always gonna be situations where back orders, manufacturer price increases that'll be passed down to us, especially pharmaceuticals, we've seen that in renewals in the past. Uh, for these reasons, I feel like a wolf and party award is probably our best option. Recommendation is for awards the lowest and best per line item as determined by the Department for the same order with available material.
So, is it lowest and best with available material, or is there?
Lowest and best, let's just hypothetically say a glove, okay? So, you buy a glove because it's the cheapest, and you find that you're ripping three-way and it's not doing what it needs to do. So, at that point, I would think they probably wouldn't wanna buy that type of glove anymore and might wanna go to the next lowest. Or if that one's on back order, maybe then the next lowest, and so on and so forth. I think flexibility on a bid with just any line items is really important, otherwise you're gonna end up with a heavy.
Correct. It gives us the ability to go to the lowest in each line item. And as mission critical as we are, if the item is on back order, we can immediately escalate to the next one that is available at the next lowest.
It's a lot.
Which is a lot, so.
So, I guess back to my question, if it's lowest and best, it's lowest and best.
That's correct, sir.
I mean, lowest is not best, and best is not lowest, right? So, well, I mean, that's for you guys to determine what's the best, but.
And you've got certain items you know are best.
That's correct.
And that's, so, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna manage you and say you gotta go with cheaper.
I appreciate that, thank you. Yes, we, we, at all costs, to look at the budget first and try to find the lowest.
But you also wanna have to go to the Gucci's and when you can get the cheap stuff.
And, and.
Isn't Gucci like the famous name, isn't that like the high dollar thing?
I would assume that we're, we're taking account when we're purchasing this stuff, and we'd probably purchase from one or two vendors, but, uh, shipping costs?
It's all destination free, they should not occur in shipping costs.
No shipping costs?
Any of them that.
For any size order?
That's what it should be, that was the best.
So, if we order one case or something, there's no shipping costs?
That's what the best said.
I'm fine with the lowest and best, but if it's not the lowest, then just make sure that it's justified.
That means the award to lowest and best with available material.
All in favor?
Aight.
Okay. Considering approving of a commission order titled and order approving a financing agreement with Hawthorne Bank and authorizing and directing issuance of a limited general obligation temporary note, Parkview Meadows Neighbor improvement project.
Tony, it's not my job. He knows way more than I do.
And the first of all, not to say $515,000 of whole county Missouri and authorizing certain other documents in action in connection to their end. You have what, study?
Joe gets to sit here on the air and browse through that stuff. If I'm gonna read through, we're not gonna do it right now before the meeting.
There's no way I'm gonna.
So, if we're, if I gotta read through all of it, we're not gonna pun it.
Tony will explain.
Please, tell us, Tony.
That's what we pay y'all for, make sure we got this temporary note, it's not ours.
Yeah, so, um, what you have for you seems like a whole lot of documents, and it's hard for me to describe that as a simple transaction, I know, but, um, all you're doing is entering into what is akin to a line of credit with Hawthorne Bank to finance this road project, Road Parkview Meadows, Neighborhood Improvement District project. This is all pursuant to the request for financing proposals that Joy Howard, your financial advisor, sent out on your behalf of, and we're helping with it. And Hawthorne had the, the lowest interest rate on that, you may recall. And so, we took all of those terms back, put them into the legal documents, and you have a simple promissory note, but then you have a financing agreement, which really contains more of the provisions. And the reason that you need the financing agreement is because obviously you've gotta have some sort of a requirement on the bank's part to continue to advance the funds as you draw them. And, uh, under the financing agreement, you can draw up to once a month for whatever amount is needed in order to pay the, uh, the cost relating to the project. The order and the financing agreement that you have does go ahead and direct the first draw in an amount equal to $31,550, I think it is, which will be sufficient to pay the full costs of your engineering contracts, assuming that's true, um, as well as just the, um, the closing costs. Might be the bank had a origination fee, the bank had a, uh, a turn fee up to an amount, and so we provided for that maximum amount. So, those funds will get deposited in an account that, um, has been set up at county. And then, any of the bills that get paid out of that, we'll come back to you for approval just as you would normally approve payment of bills before that gets paid out. So, um, the bank, Hawthorne Bank, wanted this to be treated as tax exempt interest to the bank. That's part of the reason why you have the amount of documents. And any kind of, uh, tax exemption from the federal government, as you know, comes with colossus and lots of requirements and, you know, certifications and representations about not paving the road and allowing it to become a priority, really the absence and all that sort of stuff. Any questions?
Why is it tax exempt interest?
The reason that it qualifies as tax exempt interest is because you're a governmental entity, and this is a governmental project. And so, the, uh, bank, the interest that they receive in payments from the county, they get to treat as excludable from their gross income. That will translate, translates into a lower interest rate that they offer you on the financing. It's not all that beneficial, frankly, on a one-year financing like this one, but when we get to the 20-year financing to take this one out, they'll be hugely beneficial.
Can I ask a question about the timing of the today's, uh, resolution and the issue of the bonds? What's the timing of that?
The bonds would be issued once the project is completed. And when the project is completed, then the county is required to send out a notice to all the property owners advising them that project is completed, you're the final costs, you have 30 days to prepay your eligible amount without additional interest. And then, once you get past that 30-day prepayment period where we know what decides the bond issue, then the final long-term bonds would, would go out of the issue. And, um, I'm sure at the time that, um, the county will direct Joy Howard, as financial advisor, to go ahead and solicit proposals again on the long-term financing. Yep?
Basically, can they put those two motions together, the order and the timing of the financial agreement?
Um, the order does approve the fin, the financing agreement, and so, what we would need is a motion to approve the order that, um, Sam, that you, you read, the caption. Yes, and so, you know, we just need a motion to approve that order as presented.
Friday Commissioner, County clerk, and other county officials are hereby further authorized, directed, to execute any and all documents and take their taxes if they deem necessary or advisable. But, um, I'm not following where that.
The documents that are going to be executed are in fact the ones that are approved, as well as we have, um, some closing certificates and, and that sort of thing.
And the closing certificates, other paperwork that need to be signed by.
Does I have any questions? And, yeah.
Today, right? Is it tablered later?
No, I got it right now. This, this transaction is scheduled to close on Friday.
So, once you guys do make the motion, there'll be lots of paperwork that, that everybody right here has to sign before she can actually deliver it to the bank. If we could take a break after this, sign that, and then, let's, so.
Whatever you say.
Can I ask another question about the methodology we use? Is it some different than, than I use years past, because it's a, it's any different than what we've done in the past?
This is kinda different because we've never done the construction for short term financing. But, once we get past this one, except for the laws that have changed.
I've never, ever been going through this step before, I was just curious.
Yeah, my understanding, and I wasn't involved in this, my predecessor was, but I believe the county simply self-financed the construction period. Which is definitely easier, because you save your money and you don't get into that much.
Typically don't have a problem with this, but I don't like this long document. Just gonna tell you.
You don't like what?
I don't like this long document. I like something that's one page, so.
No. I don't know if you can do it in one page.
I mean, I'd like for Jill to review this, I mean, I'm not gonna go through it today. I mean, it's too much to go through. I mean, not that I don't trust you, Tony, but I don't, I mean, there's just a lot in there, I mean, and I just, I mean, I sign any bank documents, I read through them, take more time than most, and so, I just.
Have you seen these at all, Jill?
It's Tony's legal work, so I assume, she, I, she's the expert in this area, so, that's why.
So, we need to close?
I'm sorry, I did, I, I provided the drafts of the documents, you know, a week to 10 days ago, and, um, so.
You did? You sent them to us?
I did send, I put it out on the agenda, but I didn't send it to you.
And I would add this, that I, I read through the whole thing, and I'm not an expert, and I'm not a lawyer, but I, I know this is the link that we just really have, it, it tends to all the different assurances and needs that all the different parties need. Um, maybe you or Jill could word it better, but, you know, the, the huge volume of, of words here, you know, isn't meant to make it more complicated too much, and it doesn't tie the, the feet of the county or hands of the county, but all it's doing is helping all its bases, which is big legal documents do.
I don't think it's much different than when we buy your house. I've been hurt worse by shorter units than I had by the long ones. I mean, when I bought my house, I was protected, my marriage license was one page, and then... You know, I know, so. I'm just trying to put it by the water.
Yeah, I get it.
So, I, I mean, these aren't just documents that we're just making up for this instance, these are things that y'all have used before, it's a boilerplate.
It, it is not a boilerplate, but it is a compilation of, of things that we have used.
Not boilerplate, or something.
Yes, I mean, um, this particular transaction as being structured as a, a direct loan from a, a bank with, um, like a construction loan with the drawdown provisions, to be honest, I didn't have a set of documents for a neighbor improvement district note like that. And so, I have construction loan, tax exempt, drawdown loans that I've done on other types of projects, I have neighbor improvement district notes that were, um, direct placements, notes that were offered out in the public, uh, as a public offering, and so, you know, it was a mesh of those things. And, um, I'm sure it doesn't seem like it, but I, I worked very hard trying to slim it down as much as possible. So, when you get the long-term bond issue before you in a year, the documents will be twice the length of what you're seeing right now. Um, and, but, that involves a publicly offered transaction, it's securities, I mean, there will be securities that go out into the general public for sale, um, assuming that that's the way, um, the commission decides to go with the financing, and typically that's necessary on a 20-year financing because not many banks will fix the rate for you out 20 years. So, um, so it is complicated, and I, I, you know, I, I'm not.
I'll find bank, if they're interested in talking to us.
About the long term?
Yeah, about the long term.
Great.
Sure.
Yeah.
You're gonna pay money.
So, we, you need, we need, we need everything signed, but we, Friday week.
Well, here, here's what, you know, when I was here before, I guess, the instruction that I took was that we wanted to move forward with this and get the financing closed as quickly as possible, because until the financing is closed, you're not able to get your engineer moving on the plans. And so, that's, that's why the timeframe is what it is. Doesn't bother me if we wait on the closing.
We have, we should meet again tomorrow morning. Would, would it be any problem if, if we, we tabled this till tomorrow? You know, we can look forward, and then we'll take action on it tomorrow?
That would be fine. That'd be fine.
Okay, and I wait, Jill, to look at it?
Okay, so she's thrilled.
Now, my point, Tony's a partner in Gilmore and Bell, and they, this is what they do, and they're known nationally for this.
And we represent you.
Exactly, so it's, it's like us hiring Joe Bednar to represent us in the Surtax case. Tony's your outside counsel, I'm, and sure, I can look it over, but, I mean, it's not my area.
Definitely.
So that?
So, I mean, if there's something in there that is not correct.
You can sue her for malpractice.
That's right.
I just wanna make sure Chris has got the paper open, he's got some more questions. We've worked with Tony before, I'm comfortable with them, like Jill said, they're, are professional on this. They did do a good job, didn't protect us before, we wouldn't be using them again.
Any chance that Hawthorne saw him, he was, and they didn't comment?
They did, yes, yes.
Yeah, Greg Backston was in the story yesterday at Tom's.
Oh, really? Okay, yeah.
That would also have a little bit of weight.
Was that pleasant?
Oh, sure.
This time?
Right, and your financial advisor, Joy Howard, has looked at everything as well. Of course, you know, Joy is looking at it from the financial.
He could read through the whole thing, he put the comments in the wrong places. Changed everything anyways.
Guess I'm all right, but it, um, seems like a lot of wording for, for a dang loan for $515,000, so.
You're right, and, and if, if the bank didn't care about tax exemption on the interest, it would be half the amount of paperwork they have.
You know, when you do the permanent financing, which will be, I'll make sure you guys do that.
Oh, please. Can you put pictures in it, too?
Just on, just on the computer, though.
I'll make a motion, we approve the finance agreement. That's basically what we can call it, right?
The, the motion we need to be to approve the order.
To approve the order.
As presented.
As presented. Okay, thank you. I didn't wanna read through all that, but.
I will, I will second. Questions? All in favor?
Aight.
Okay.
Could we take that over?
Yes, yes, yes.
I thought you said there's two things we need to approve from this. Does the order entail all of it?
Yes.
All of it?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Just give the, bring my stamp out here? Do we have copies of those? We have to.
Uh huh. Thank you.
Did you?
Oh, no, you're, you're fine, I just, yeah. I'm gonna use that with a handrail.
Well.
I need some money, build a road.
Okay, now we have two sets of the loading house, so this includes the order of the financing agreement.
Oh, I know, because you got my thing.
I'm sorry, I didn't call you yesterday.
We'll work on it.
One thing after the other, actually, and then I'll send it forward, like, okay, tell about them.
Okay, we'll work on it. I just think, uh, the county saying no is a little, I'm, I'm not buying that.
Oh, because of the revenue?
It's a, oh, we invert, how's that work out when everything, I don't think.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Well, you're not gonna have to.
I know.
I don't trust them.
Well, and if that funds on, we would.
Yeah.
No, we would, just like.
We'll work on it.
Okay, we're finished with this one?
You just need a two of them, tell them when you.
Um, there's three.
I'm gonna sign in, I'm gonna go there real quick. He's signed. That's all. Yeah. Just trying to get rid of them.
Yeah.
Thanks, son. Yeah. Yeah, thanks, very enough.
Right. That's right.
Will we add anything?
Uh, naturally.
Who are you?
Okay.
Come back all the time.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be fine. Because we need one of the. Thanks, thanks very much.
Okay. Uh, so, we need to sign the agreement with Engineering Services. Is that priority?
This, this is the agreement that we presented, uh, last week in the asset deplay, until we sign the order that you listed. It's with the Central Reserve Professional Services, uh, for engineering, prepare the plans on this project, the contract amount is $22,055.
That one I did look over, delegated to you.
Our recommendation is to approve, so we can get started on.
All in favor?
Aight.
Okay. Signing of agreement with KOPI, 3MS copy machine maintenance.
This is our yearly maintenance agreement for our copy machine that we have over on our dispatch side. Uh, Jill did look at it, you signed one, I think, a couple weeks ago for the one over on, uh, Bill Far's side. Is that right here? So, if we, if there's no pricing or anything, I don't see it on this agreement, am I missing something?
Okay, yeah.
Or is this a, still grant to the contract, we already saw?
Yeah, we already have machine, did the.
I don't see the price on that one.
Yeah, what's price?
Yeah. 110-year machine or 50-year machine?
Well, I don't think any of them have a 10-year or 50-year.
I was just gonna, you know, when it comes to maintenance.
They build in, uh, west and south.
Yeah, but when you talk about maintenance agreements, those driving nets.
We carry maintenance agreements on all our copiers because the cost is so minimal and we can call them at any time and we do it here.
Excuse me?
Four hundred something.
That guy's over here all the time.
We have him here probably five, six times a year.
They should fix it right there.
There's always something that goes wrong.
Melanie needs to quit kicking it.
So I think it's a well. It won't work.
I know. I think we usually come down to it that it's necessary even, but I just, I don't have to like it. I don't think Chris likes them either. I'm not gonna speak for him, but I don't, I don't buy it. I think he has.
And we, we don't own printers anymore. We don't own a lot of stuff that, you know, maintenance wires. We take the three-year that comes with most of our computer stuff. We don't do any of that anymore, but as far as the copy machine goes, we do usually do the maintenance. If anybody goes without it, I mean, that's not something we have a tech here that knows how to do that.
They up, can't switch it out?
God, we need a server.
Come on, Dave. Get off. We didn't even get you a cape and everything, you know? You could be the super.
I can call him. I don't get fixed, give him my phone.
You okay?
I may as well sign the maintenance agreement with K O P I.
All in favor?
Aye.
I might have time to talk.
I know.
I didn't say that, I guess, I didn't take it.
Been discussing award for 2015-47 biometric health screening service.
This is kind of twofold. A few months ago, I don't know where exactly when it was, but the whole county health wellness initiative, that committee, we did two bids for the biometric screening, spread before you, got three, actually four responses, but one was late. Below bid is capital region. Obviously, they have a local present and anything else we can talk about, but would we keep more direction on where we want to go from here and if we do want to proceed, who we want to pay for work to.
Of course, whether you got late or even close.
I don't open them. It goes directly back to.
I gotta refresh my memory on this. Well, we're gonna supply this and make it available to all employees, so this bottom line bid is not necessarily what it's gonna cost, just if that's a full participation.
Yeah, we base us 300 employees.
So if only half of them participate, and we're looking at it saving us money because it's, I'm gonna try to keep people well and keep our health on sound.
And just that, that is a reminder, initially, we had talked about doing a financial incentive to the employees. Just to be clear, this does not reflect that.
Again, when we worked with United Healthcare, we had this biometric, and it was a gift card incentive for the employees of the $75 if they did participate in that.
What about if we do races? They'll get their race unless they do it.
Okay, well, there's an issue.
Hey, I'm sorry. If we're gonna do this, it must go full bore. Or punish ones that don't do it.
I don't think you can make them do that.
Because everybody, I know, we probably can't do it. But if you got half the people here trying to keep the cost down for the other half, then there should be some kind of repercussion.
Or maybe get enough that they get an annual checkup at their doctors and tests run, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah. I'm fine with that. I just, I think it aggravates with the wellness stuff. I think everybody will take it upon themselves.
And this being a little different coming from our health department, there may be more of an incentive for our, you know, the warm and fuzzy, the health department get out there and talk to our employees and maybe get them to do this versus a company that we just hired. We didn't hire. It came with you. It didn't cost us anything, but they came in and people were like, kind of apprehensive, you know, just to do it, because I don't find it fun. So maybe this first year, if you do want to do it, then we can just let the health department run it, see what kind of participation we have once again, and then maybe you can put the carrot and stick out there the next year. It's up to you.
As you get older, there's a lot more for.
And I think kind of cap reg is important over, it's more like Hibi. Hibi just has diet, I mean, they're better dieticians than I do it. And cap reg has like wellness navigators, they'll be a more holistic approach, and they can talk to you about your blood pressure, your blood glucose sensation, or any health issues you have, not just your diet. So that was another reason I like the cap reg. Yeah, they have an aggregate reporting. It's part of the package in, in our major position, our position as this became, last month, we kind of have that person oversee it.
I'm trying to recall. Thought we talked about incentivizing people to do this.
Right.
And then this reporting. I guess I'm not following what that is. I mean, like, did I have to generate a report for us countywide or per person, or what?
At least aggregate reporting, so it'll be countywide, company employees are participating. They show up for both of their counseling sessions, and I haven't seen examples before, so I don't know what I'll talk about. If I refer, I'll refer to other physicians or, you know, what they were counseling about, then it'll be aggregate, so it won't leave us with misinformation.
And we did receive that kind of tip of, we're recording before, but it's main people, but it just kind of made the, where our people stood, just like that. How many people were? We have a smoking problem here, we have a labor rate problem here. Kind of those kinds of statistics.
So what is this participant no-show? Per person, $44?
If you, if the person schedules their appointment, you know, so how we're still gonna get charged for it?
And then just the cotton eye screening and reporting?
That is, um, I mean, is, we can pick that or not. That's for just definitely nicotine system, like every, I think they have a policy that their employees can't use nicotine, so they test every employee for it. We can pick that or not. They don't have any policies against it, but we can, we could test our employees, see if they're using nicotine.
That's a problem. If it were the government, that's a Fourth Amendment search, so it would have to be voluntary, not mandatory.
Oh, that's different. We're gonna start picking on smokers, tobacco.
That might not work. Some workplaces are greater.
Well, if you're not too bourbon, I'm fine.
We're gonna have to start testing you at 9:00 a.m.
Very interesting.
Is this something you guys want to move forward with, or?
Yeah, it's not gonna hurt. We'll get help with that, you know? Cost to, we keep it down on half of them, and I don't necessarily think we need to incentivize it right now. I'll go do it. I mean, I'm scared to find out what kind of shape I'm in besides the round, but, you know? I don't think it's a bad thing out there and get yourself a check, you know?
And we support this for employees that are not on county insurance.
What's that?
There are some county employees that don't take the county insurance. Will they still be eligible if they're listed? I know, I'll get that question.
Are they included in these numbers?
Yeah. Well, we estimate.
Or is this employees only? This is employees only. It's not including people that are on.
She's talking about employees. Some places that don't take county insurance.
That's included, this, but not people that are on county insurance that aren't county employees.
Right. No, it depends.
I'm, I'm fine.
Yeah. I mean, so we'll have to have some type of an agreement that we'll sign that I assume that we move forward to, you'll bring to us the outlines what we want, what we don't want.
Can we go through a practice run?
I may as well, we award the biometric health screening services to capital, to capital region.
I'm gonna abstain. All in favor?
I shouldn't even been in and talks him saying, you just broke the law. Jill, call Baylor.
I can't. I can't out of here. Sorry, Kristen.
I think Hilke was just out there.
Uh, yeah. Kristen, you take over. Come sit up here.
Sam, you're gonna need to get rid of that seat on the cap region board.
No.
No, it'd have to be Judge Joyce.
Oh, if you're gonna abstain from everything that cap region is involved with, you're gonna have to get out of here. Or get out of there, Sam. You gotta make up your mind. What do you want? It's either the kids or me.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Yes, we can. Give out this case. We're done with that.
This is a squirrel.
Cisco intrusion prevention module, annual license contract renewal. Yeah, we gotta come up with a, some little shorter.
Yeah, I was, after I started typing it out, it got me kind of long. But this is a, a module that fits in our firewall that adds another layer of security as for preventing somebody attacking our network, and it's an annual thing that's actually a month overdue, so we just gotta plug it in on itself. Right now, it's really not functioning, so until we get this approved and get the new license key put in, then it's kind of sitting here. So, just one more thing that everything's dragging on with it, instead of just, here it is, do it, it's, you know, it's taken a month to get it closed. And this module is actually, was a result of our outside auditors hitting us every year because we didn't have it, so we got it, so this is kind of keeping with their regulations for many years.
That's just a vendor support?
Right.
Description or whatever?
Yeah, it's just like sematic or anything else that just happens to be to this module that's in this Cisco module in our firewall.
I may as well sign the vendor support agreement with CenturyLink.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other unfinished business? New business, accounts payable review?
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable.
I got it. Go ahead, have us from there.
Pull one of theirs out.
I'll make most of it with all of them, except mine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, but I.
Can you guys make a note?
Yeah. I may as well we approve of accounts payable for Jeff.
Second. In favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay. Assessors office to discuss adjustments to certified values.
Hello, Tom.
Hey, Tom.
Just sent stuff you emailed us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. Two of the properties are recently acquired by governmental entities and thus need taxes. Four of the properties are corrections, and one property, West Main Street property, is needing a maintenance as a certificate of qualification for tax abatement was issued in November.
I have a question about that last one. Chris and I have been going back and forth, and what he had put on there was the current value, and actually, and this was coming from the head of, what is it, where is it? Housing Commission? Anyway.
The attorney for the house.
I'm, I'm, the Supreme Court interpretation of that statute is actually when you set that value, it's the value before the improvement started. So did you all adjust that? Did Chris tell you about that?
Uh, yes, he did mention it.
Okay. I mean, what you're not, what you're certifying is today, that yes, back then it was worth this.
Yes.
You're not predating anything. And I, and I sent that to him in an email.
Yes.
So you've adjusted that, then?
Uh, 109 on there.
Oh, you have 109?
Is that the old?
That's the old.
That is the old. And the new would be zero. Because we're abating.
Well, I think you're abating 109,000 worth of what its current value is, which is what? About 300 and something?
Well, that is the appraised value, 109 is the assessed value.
Okay.
So it has zero assessed value now?
Uh.
Or that's what it's being assessed on is zero because it's being abated?
Yes.
So its value basically is gonna be, its value is still the value, right?
Um, the value will be zero for the next 10 years.
Okay. I wasn't sure how y'all did that on the books. I thought it still had a value of X amount of dollars, but it was assessed zero.
I thought it was, I don't know, it seems like the way I was reading it was the abatement would be on the improvements above what it was worth prior to the approval.
That is correct. And the property was acquired in 2012. 2013, 2014, we carried a value of zero on the property due to contamination on the property and the conditions, not only this, and obsolescence. So at that time, we decided to leave the value at zero until improvements were made, remediation was made on the property, and makes sense. So.
So the abatement's gonna be on the complete amount, so that's why it's zero.
Yeah, that was never explained to me. That's why I was just asking. All I did was get the number.
I knew you had emailed, said you all going back and forth, we're not doing fine with it.
Yeah, I'm still confused. I'm being confused more, but anyway. The assessed value seems like it'd be the assessed value, and maybe not be the, how it's taxed, but, you know.
I mean, there'll still be an assessed value.
I mean, because even the land is worth something, so that would be, have to be assessed value. I mean, just because it's a government entity or untaxable or whatever, how you have it at zero?
Are we talking on the Main Street property?
Uh, just in general, yeah.
That was owned by the city before they acquired it.
Yes.
So that's probably why it had zero assessed value. City wouldn't be taxed on it.
Right. And then when the new owner acquired it, due to the contamination, we left it at zero until it could be remediated because we thought, well, what is the value of the property as is?
I guess what my question is, is it's not really pertaining to any one of these, is there's the appraised value, there's the assessed value, and then you're telling me that some of these are going to zero? Well, I can't imagine that any, any property would have zero assessed value.
Right. As far as the tax books that the court works off of, the number would be zero in our system. There's still a value in the system.
Yeah.
Even though the property owner, like, for example, like University or Dulwich Works though, would be paying taxes on it, in our system, there's still a value.
Right.
But as far as the value that the court works off of, it'd be zero because they're not going to.
So you're saying it's zero, I would say it's exempt. I mean, I wouldn't say the value's zero. I'd say that the value is exempt. Uh, that it's non-taxable, but I don't know how you're, I mean, obviously, you're doing that because that's the way the systems work, I'm saying.
It is in the system, it has a damage code.
Right.
For it, so the assessment would be zero percent instead of the, the connection referred to, depending on the, the actual value of the property.
Okay. Trying to clarify that.
Are we talking on the main street property?
Uh, just in general, yeah.
That was owned by the city before they acquired it and went.
Yes.
So, that's probably why it had zero assessed value. City wouldn't be taxed on it.
Right. And then when the new owner acquired it, due to the contamination, we left it at zero until it could be remediated because we thought, well, what is the value of the property as it is?
I guess what my question is, is it's not really pertaining to any one of these, is there's the appraised value, there's the assessed value, and then you're telling me that some of these are going to zero? Well, I can't imagine that any, any property would have zero assessed value.
Right. As far as the tax books that the court works off of, the number would be zero. In our system, there's still a value in the system. Even though the property owner, like, for example, like University or Dulwich Works though, would be paying taxes on it, in our system, there's still a value.
Right.
But as far as the value that the court works off of, it'd be zero because they're not going to-
So, you're saying it's zero, I would say it's exempt. I mean, I wouldn't say the value's zero.
Yeah.
I'd say that the value is exempt. That it's non-taxable, but I, I don't know how you're, I mean, obviously, you're doing that because that's the way the systems work, I'd say.
It is in the system, it has a damage code-
Right.
For it, so the assessment would be zero percent instead of the, the connection referred to you depending on the, the actual value of the property.
Trying to clarify that. I'm, I'm good with all this.
I don't disagree with that, it is confusing, huh? It's got a certain value, I'd give him something for it.
Sure. I'm able to re-approve the adjustment to the certified value as presented by the assessor.
That's a good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you, Sean.
I will.
Thank you very much.
You'll get mad when I sell it, no?
When can we sign Osage City over to, uh-
Chelsea?
Chelsea. Discussion of cellular-
What's that gonna be, February? Is that what the babies do?
Yeah.
I say that's good.
We can't do a rap, but we can give her the land, right?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion of cellular internet modem for EMS dispatch.
Uh, back in mid-October, mid- late October, the city suffered a complete internet outage. Uh, the internet provider, I'm not sure exactly what happened that caused it, but the entire city was out for quite a period of time, and that killed our data push within our dispatch center within EMS. I sent that out to you guys. This would be a cradle point type modem that would sense the hardline failure and switch over to a cellular data exchange for our EMS dispatch. Uh, I liken it to an analogy of a backup generator. It would just supply data push for the mission critical items that we have within the EMS dispatch, not the entire internet as we know it, but just the mission critical stuff for the data push. The price for the cradle point is five fifty, two forty-nine, and then a thirty-five dollar positioning charge. And then also, we would utilize a forty dollar a month recurring data plan through Verizon.
Do we have other plans with Verizon right now?
We do not. We have currently AT&amp;T.
Are they the only ones that can do this, or can we piggyback this on AT&amp;T and a lesser charge? Have you looked at all that stuff?
Uh, as far as the data plan that we're looking at here, to my understanding-
I have, I have compared that and Verizon offers unlimited data, uh, or AT&amp;T does. Verizon is actually a cost saving for that. I've actually compared some of our other devices that we have at EMS with Verizon and putting together some ways of saving some money by switching some of those into Verizon as well.
I was gonna rule that direction, too. We need to make something out of that.
I've, I've, I've started working on that where we can cut down those recurring costs with our cellular, um, devices. I'm just not sure that, I'm not fully finished with it yet. The other thing that helps with Verizon is Cole County is such an AT&amp;T-heavy county that, especially like Fourth of July instances, remember there are a lot of AT&amp;T users, the box down network, Verizon's, as of now, it's free, not as overly used, so there's still network available for it, so they're still bandwidth for their infrastructure.
So, what we use right now for dispatches, it's a line, landline.
Yeah, we utilize the county's current provider.
Why wouldn't we just get away from the landline and go to- Wireless.
Then you're relying, you're, you're relying on cellular infrastructure as a primary.
Okay. But then if we start the landline as a backup, we don't save any money to do it the opposite way.
You're saying you still have to pay both, is what you're saying?
We, we still have to pay both because we are under the county's blanket plan, if he-
Okay.
No, that's what I meant.
Yeah. We're still under Blanketly, the county's-
I'm allowed my stupid questions all day.
See, you're, you're good. That's one. Yeah, it's just a fail. It'll, it'll sense if there's internet out there-
Around me all morning.
And then feed internet into the, into the dispatch.
Gotcha. I don't have landline at home anymore. I rely on my cellphone, but also don't have, well, I mean, if I have a emergency, I'll just throw the letters over.
You're filming this? You got this?
Okay.
Can't wait news tonight.
I have something to post on Facebook.
And we haven't gotten to the budget, yeah. We're back.
Yes, so for him, I just need your signature, you want me to bring that up?
I don't have a problem with it.
There would be one more picture with Verizon. I think you have that in inbox. Will you bring that?
It's not a contract, it's just a P.O. for purchase.
Well, there's terms and conditions attached to it, and I just was able to look at that this morning, and it has that language that drives me nuts, about no warranty, merchantability, yada, yada, adhesion contract, but because it's five hundred dollars, it doesn't get me heartburn.
The, uh, recurring data plan, we can bring it up once Kevin gets that scored away.
I'm able to, we signed the cellular, cellular internet mode agreement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Well, thanks for looking at that, too, Kevin. I know you're diligent with finding the best way to do it, so I appreciate you looking into that. I'm kinda technologically challenged on how that stuff works. I'll rely on you to-
I just use big words.
We have too many big words in Dale's thing. Okay, first reading of budget adjustment number sixteen.
Well, this is, again, first reading, no action today, it's been five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the name of the project.
That's fine. Thank you.
For project purposes, we'll hold it for ten days and then write back up.
Transfer for that.
Basically, we're budgeting to get the all the money in, which is the financing today, and you guys have heard it, uh, whatever's left in here will transfer over into next year. Chris, I created a new account with the sales tax trust, because it is a little different for us.
Okay, approval of committee for Citizens for Proposition A. I talked to Ron Medine last night, 'cause he's our treasurer, and he had checked because we thought maybe the committee was, uh, stolen existence from five years ago. It's not. And then I talked to Mark at CAP Region's thing, and I said, "Did you appoint the committee when you need it?" He said, "Yes." So, uh, our Citizens for Proposition A Committee are co-chairs, Roger Schwartz, Laurie Helsher, Brad Bates, and Ron Medine is treasurer. We need to appoint them again to, uh, head up our half cent sales tax.
You still wanna do it after sitting here for an hour? Could've put you on the top of this, couldn't we? I'm, I'm good. I didn't know if we appointed them or not, so if you talk to Mark-
I talked to Mark, and Mark said we did, and then Ron Medine said that, that our former committee ceased to exist, so we need to find a new-
Go with it.
I'm, I'm good with it, I just got a question, so I'm just a little confused that we're appointing a committee, but I thought that we couldn't have anything to do with this.
We don't necessarily have anything to do with campaigning, or I guess we can, or elected officials would do it, we want to with it.
No, you can't.
We can't promote it.
You can't promote it, you can't put any money in it.
No, no.
I can't donate to the campaign for Proposition-
Yes, you can as an individual.
County can.
As a contract.
As elected officials in the county as a whole.
And I can't campaign for it? I can't be out there saying that's a good idea for the pass?
Yeah, you can do that.
Okay, that's what I was saying, we can, we can have as much to do with it, I mean, 'cause this is so important.
And then there's gonna be like an, an even larger committee that-
The county can't put any money in it.
The county can.
That, that's, I wasn't even talking about the county, I'm just a commissioner. As elected official, I can go out there and promote it as much as possible. Okay, I was just making sure, 'cause then we're gonna be able to be on the radio and talk about it, so that's not all bad. Did we do this, did we yet?
That's been signed.
Out on man, collector. I just got to see my page hat on. Yellow flag. Good one, Larry.
He was throwing his voice.
Did you make a motion?
No.
Oh. I don't know.
No, okay, I mean, I just, I'm clear of the whole process, so.
All right, I'll make a motion and, like, or we approve the Committee for Citizens for Proposition A as presented by Samuel. Question?
That's fine.
What's your opinion on this one?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Roger. We still gotta do it, right?
Yeah, Roger, you can-
Oh, you're on there.
As far as the proposal that we presented last week, have y'all given any thought to that? I know that the committee has indicated they need something to be able to start.
For the amount that we're gonna do as co-op projects?
Right.
I'm, in general, fine with those numbers. I'm not crazy about the co-op projects. We need to talk about that.
Again, the reason we do it by the category is just so that you all can, uh, you still have the ability to approve the projects that co-op, or whoever the co-op agency is that comes in, you still have a chance to approve it at that time.
Well, the list isn't concrete anyway. We're gonna categorically approve it and say this summer we're gonna put on it, 'cause we may have something fall off the list and move to a different area, and that's what we gotta make sure we do so. We promise we spend that much in that category, not on this project.
What I understand is we need something kind of firm, because they already talked to Civic Progress, 'cause they're actually looking at getting that money this year, and we have to go make a presentation to Civic Progress and kinda show them what we're gonna do with, with our money, so we do-
Just the categories, though, not, not specific, not specific projects or anything like that. The important thing that folks are asking is, okay, what are you gonna do? How much money's involved, and what is it going to go for? So, that's, I think, what we're looking for here is to try to get approval of thirty-one million total and how much is going to the different categories.
Do we need to vote on that or anything, or to approve the amounts?
I would say you need to at least have the blessing to the county commission.
Let's put it on the next agenda.
Or tomorrow?
No.
It's too late.
That's all business. Or unfinished business. When do you need it?
Right. Civic Progress asked us to bring it to them, and we asked for money to smoke the campaign.
We need to keep it moving, so we can talk about on the, we can talk about tomorrow when unfinished business or old business or-
Scheduled for ten thirty.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be done by ten thirty tomorrow, right?
Get Mellie to send it out right now.
I, I'm, I'll tell you what, they've already had one meeting, I attended, I think you've got another one, uh, number seventeen. They're, they're, you know, there's one, one good Helsher, Laurie Helsher, my God, that woman-
She married- She married a-
She's really, I, I-
She married-
She's a taskmaster.
Pardon?
She's a taskmaster.
Yeah, she really is.
And I don't know if tomorrow or next Tuesday, because I think you do have to give your direction on the fifteen percent, too.
I don't want to talk about tomorrow.
Okay, let's put it on, let's shut on-
Oh, we need to do it.
Week's agenda.
I'm fine with the numbers and the percentages that we had presented before. I don't know how much more discussion we need to have, if y'all wanna talk more about that. Here's we had.
Let's just do it next week. I don't want it.
Okay. Okay. That'll be before your seventeenth meeting.
And I would also like to put on the agenda, because I know if December, January gets away from us, we have to have it to the clerk's office before the January twenty-sixth to be on the April ballot, so I'd like to put that either on January twelfth or nineteenth, it's a resolution, the paperwork that Jill will have to work up to be able to get on the ballot.
Yes, just like I know what-
Whatever else y'all need on that, Roger.
Needs to be done by the, what, the sixteenth?
The twenty-sixth and then-
Oh, twenty-sixth, okay.
I was just looking at the two different agenda dates that all we had.
We have to schedule another date in there, we can't.
Yeah.
I got Christmas shopping to do, so-
Next Tuesday, then we'll be back on.
In January, huh?
That's the best time to do your Christmas shopping, in January.
Yeah, this is just-
I avoided the crowds, too. I did my cyber shopping on Tuesday.
Okay, okay, we're gonna keep going.
We do wanna call it Proposition A, by the way.
I'm sorry?
We do wanna call it Proposition A.
Yes.
There's an advantage to that, money-wise?
Yeah. You're, you're legitimate now. It's just, uh, disposal of old poll books.
Hello. We have our old poll books, and basically, we just use them for elections. There's a program on there that we use for elections, so we'd like to just remove that program and then let Jennifer, or try to sell them through, like, MoGuts, uh, try to get rid of them somehow. Generally, I think it's been the policy to wipe and clean, take Windows and everything off, and then place them at no value. But we just take off our program, and we could possibly sell them, get some money back out of it. We, we checked on the Gov. deals the other day for this kind of a computer, and they were, uh, there were some of them on there, and they were going for around twenty bucks. Dale, I can help, but they're not working. Kinda hoping we can just take our program off of it and then sell them with Windows and everything still on.
That really means no expert computer person could actually find that data. That's why they, they always strip them, uh, you know how people can retrieve stuff off of old computers?
Something I have to ask Dale about, if, if it's all, what we're learning anyway, actually, voting for the election.
Not social security.
I know it's just the polling places of people, but you can get a list of them, I think, so it's just recent information, so nothing to do with NCR, so.
So, how does that, uh, how does that work? Because don't they have a scanner that scans your voter ID for your driver's license?
Yeah, we have the scanners and the-
So, surely that driver's license has to correlate to your name? Is that right? So, that's, that's pretty-
The barcode, basically, barcode off of it brings up your information, like where you go, your address, who does it bring up, like birthday?
I'm just wondering if that driver's license code can be correlated somewhere else to pull up that information. That'd be my only concern, I mean.
Let's check with Dale and, and make sure, seeing you can do that, if we could, if, if we can get a little bit of money off of him without, uh, compromising personal information, then I can say, go for it, but if there's, yeah, some of these-
Just wondering, how old are they? Not ten or- About five years.
Tablet or what?
Twenty-two. They are, they do have Wi-Fi, they're, they're not bad. What other agencies willing to use them?
Windows Tablet, oh, it is?
Check, check with Dale, I, I think if, if he can-
If he can remove the-
If he can remove it, where, where, then, then, yeah, we can get some, some money back. I think that's being-
Try to get it. All right, thanks.
Thanks.
And if I could, I'd say here, I, it's not on the agenda, it's just a direction we need. Our postage machine, I'm sure you've seen the many emails that have been going back and forth about the problems we've had with it. We purchased that machine in, what, five years ago, and the county clerk handles the operation of it, so we usually, out of sales tax or whatever, pay for the purchase of it. I'd like to have Jennifer, and make with you, have Jennifer go out to bid, see if there's leasing options and buying, so I just want you all to bless and get that, Jennifer do that, with the county clerk helping them, helping her.
Yeah, that's, it's, now, of course, no, you do it the way we did the story, you just, you get those Rolster stamps.
You hear that, Larry? He's got more bills to write.
It's a real problem for us right now. We did go get Rolster stamps, but we, you know, we have hundreds of pieces mailed out every day at this time of year, so.
There are cooperative procurement agreements, and I've requested quotes for a couple of those that could possibly speed the process along. The Pitney Bowes machine, which I understand is supposed to be a really solid unit, they indicated that they could give us a better price if we bid it out. So, I'm not really sure, if we get these other meds back and they're less, I mean, I guess is that something that's okay for us inside, or should we?
Well, it's an emergency. You've got a bunch of stuff going through there.
It's, it really is.
I've just-
It is broke down quite often, and they needed some new rollers and-
I think we need to get fixed.
Yeah.
I don't think we need to go through a bunch of government research to wait for it to get bid for sixteen weeks and advertise it and all that stuff. Can we say it's an emergency and get the phone bids?
If it's a cooperative procurement, we can buy it or not.
But she said what you get, if we do the phone bids, we might be able to get cheaper.
They're getting, yeah, that's what Pitney Bowes has said, that if you put it out for bid, then you respond, possibly make a lower price than what's reflected on state contracts.
Who else does?
Datacom is getting me a quote, and Rico's getting me a quote, and I reached out also to KODI, they don't do that.
I'd be fine with saying it's an emergency and let's get this moving.
We don't even need to do that if we go with the cooperative procurement and then either that or the Pitney Bowes, because that's on state bid.
But we can get it cheaper than the cooperative procurement.
I think we wanna look at the leasing versus buying. I mean, it's pretty pricey because it'll only last five years. And we pay maintenance on it. We pay all these other things on it even if we buy it. So if the history has only lasted five years with those machines...
So if we lease it?
There are options for that too.
I mean, I can get whatever options we have and bring it. I'm just not sure if we're gonna bid it out formally, I'd get rolling on that right away because I know there's need. If we are open to doing whatever to move the process along, it's kind of...
What's the cost? What's the cost?
What was that, what Steve said?
It's three hundred, three hundred and thirty dollars a month to lease it?
Yeah.
Well, the leasing, you wouldn't have to bid then because you don't have, you haven't exceeded the amount in ninety days. So Jennifer could just call around on that.
How much is the machine?
Just have all purchased.
Probably seven, eight thousand dollars.
The upfront purchase price, eight thousand four hundred seventy-two. And it has the quarterly renewal rental, two hundred twenty-eight, and annual maintenance of five twenty-seven.
How much?
Total annual cost after the first year, one thousand eight hundred thirty-nine. Initial upfront purchase price, eight thousand four hundred seventy-two.
So your question point is about five years, I think.
So if you lease it, they don't have this cost?
Uncle Happy's with you on it.
You go, you get some numbers on that 'cause I would like to look at that lease option versus buy 'cause the lease would include the maintenance.
And I asked for those numbers a few days ago. It's not on our next meeting and we can figure it out.
Yeah, we're all for your money, Larry.
Imagine that. I just wanna keep it moving 'cause I don't want, it's ridiculous for them to have to sit down there and stick stamps on there and stuff. Larry stands there with his tongue out so they can look at it. It does keep it from talking too much, so, kinda like that.
I like to eat onions before I do that.
We wanna know what you have for us.
Coffee and, my banana's still in there.
What Debbie gave me?
Oh, yeah.
Whatever Debbie tells me.
Can we put that on the agenda for next week or you wanna just put it on the next available agenda and then you can email us the stuff and we can look over it?
We can do it tomorrow.
I'd like you to move faster than that.
Yeah.
Let me put on some calls to see if I can modify her, get some reverse right away here today.
Yeah, Melody add it to the agenda for tomorrow.
Ten-thirty if it's something. That's what I can line with and approve real quick on five-two. We're gonna be done by ten-thirty tomorrow, ten-thirty-one now.
Yeah, window replacement.
Yeah, send that, send that.
Okay, yeah. Replacement window color?
Um, whatever you guys wanna do, both the colors they have available for the casing or whatever. There are different types of window at the courthouse and the annex. They both have black and they both have the dark bronze.
Did you see our emails?
Do as match, what's that?
Match the color.
Just match the color, just match, yeah.
I don't know.
So...
I'm colorblind, so I can't do it.
You're saying that, I mean, it's either black or dark bronze.
Or dark bronze, so...
Yeah, whichever one's closest to what's there.
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, it depends on what computer you're looking at. On me, they look the same. My screen, they look almost exactly the same.
They have a color chip? Didn't we write that in our...
You tell them.
Hacker's choice, she'll weigh in.
Wouldn't you say black? They're dark.
They're going to have the dark bronze.
Okay, dark bronze.
Just keep the same as what we got.
That's what she's asking.
That's easier said than done.
It's a black or dark.
That's easier said than done.
Bright white, off-white, clear white.
Beige white.
Snow white, Jeff white.
Cream white.
What else? Who's the other one? It's a comedian, diamond.
If you wanna get it, do they have a color?
Gray white? I'm talking about diamonds this time of year.
I don't want, I don't really wanna see it on the computer because that's not accurate color.
That's all we have to go on.
Okay, then you need...
What's wrong with you?
Melody sent us...
Andy is in Christmas shopping earlier.
Color chart that actually has the aluminum with the color.
I don't wanna take anybody off on this pressing on the message. He told me that they really need a decision this week, otherwise it's gonna put him behind.
Fine, but every, I mean, I got some window colors the other day and they had a little thing that had aluminum.
That's why I don't want to hit, 'cause all I have is the computer.
If we had that... Doesn't matter, but you can't pick colors off of a computer.
Exactly right, and that's what I don't...
Hey Sam, bring it in here.
So if he'll, if he'll get us a color chip swap, then we can...
We need to pick up the color. You're trying to find a color? No, are you looking for the color? Are we talking about that? Sam, bring that coffee in here.
Actually, Jennifer Woods, weren't some of them Quaker?
Yeah, they're all, they're both Quaker.
I have a Quaker color chip chart in my truck.
Grab it.
Grab it.
You know what, I have to bid.
Big tip.
They didn't have this picked out before.
I want a big tip.
Oh, come on.
It was narrowed down, yeah, in respects to the bronze and black.
Second rate before we did budget discussions.
Are we all on budget now?
Yeah.
I'm still leaving the rub, though.
That's fine.
Just gotta stop. What you do, Debbie?
There you are, sir.
Big deal.
I think that, uh, City House, uh, should be a big trust.
Where's the bar code?
Well, whatever, you know, something, do you have anything up there?
No, Mike's got it.
I'm kind of not sure if there's anything left up here.
I'm probably gonna be the bad guy. I'd rather get to be the bad guy.
Yeah, 'cause I don't have any of them.
Yeah. What I'm struggling with yours is we don't have any position on when he was here and that one needed it.
Oh, no.
I'm not saying that one, but I'm struggling with that one. So maybe Jeff talked about that. Yeah, I think you were asking for one and a half or something. He's gonna make the, uh, whip one full time and then one for department.
Why am I interrupting you? You still got that terrified Democrat here.
Oh, yeah. Dude, I'm not done reading it. It is hilarious. Did you see my pictures?
I didn't see the article.
Yes, it says on?
But they have their, in their commission, their health, the director made a report of what they had done.
I'm giving it back to you. Say, do you guys know what you're doing?
No, but, you know, it's, it's interesting to see what, what Sage can do and then what you do. And of course, there are different sizes, but it's...
I'm gonna tell you right now, uh, if Ian is being stressed out with too much work or stressed...
You mean Chris?
Chris, I'm sorry, Ian. If Chris is being stretched out that much, I mean, that's how I would stretch it out. Quit doing on-site waste treatment, system inspections. That's a state deal. They should do it. And if someone's got a problem with it, then they're just gonna talk to the state. State is trying to have too much other stuff on us right now, too.
We did get permission.
Uh, it wasn't permitted either. Copying, posting shit. It works out okay whenever you drive out there, you look at it, they're saying, looks good, and then when you have it...
I know, it's, they spend a lot of time.
Chris had a thousand dollars worth of hours in last night. Not to get to administration. So I, I'm sorry, I think that's a state issue if they wanna send us in.
Well, there's a lot of things that really are probably our issues, but we're, they are our issues. I mean, it shouldn't be state. It should be...
And we get, yeah, and I'm not making arguments, but we do get some critical comments. We do get a few things. And I truly believe that because we do it, it's done better.
He agreed with that, he was saying, like, they're quicker and more efficient.
Well, the state won't.
They would do it when they have to, but people would get done, would get tired of it and they just put it in the system. We do it better because we do it locally, I truly believe.
I think if there's borderline ones and they got questions what they can't, can't do, yes, it is, and we're gonna come out there and say, yeah, here's where you can put it. We'll mark it out. Chris did a very good job working with the one that we had problems with. Okay, well, things got moved a little bit 'cause it's all red, different ways he looked at it. We gotta take care of the whole machine. But if somebody comes in there and they're putting it out in the middle, there's no, and it really doesn't matter, there's no reason for anyone to have to wait one second for an inspector to come out and say, okay, it's fine. Uh, I think it should be plain driven with, uh, the last email, the one I sent you. I don't know. There's a lot to it besides, I don't know, the state passing stuff down to us is very frustrating. I didn't even really get to look at the one that you sent us. I don't know why we're not getting those fiscal notes back.
I don't know either.
Because I thought we were getting those for...
Here are the inspections to us and that would be huge because they have to be like national certified to handle it. I don't know, so...
I paid it up, actually.
Twenty-one county, I looked it up.
Yeah.
And they said, I mean, Boone County has stated that it takes eighty hours to do one because of the inspection.
And we would get, we would get reimbursed for that?
Well, yeah, a little bit. They have some part that, but if it was appropriated, we could make options. Exactly, pretty serious.
All right, they wanna do it, I think they need to pay, they need to do it, and she's got to pay it. You guys said an R M?
An R M, yeah. And we can't get a R M, that's what she may have opened, and like thirty-nine, they changed to the R M, so, you know. They can make more at the hospitals. We're trying to sell, yeah, but you'll have to even for weekends or holidays, you know, we're trying to sell. Anyway, I just thought I'd be a question.
Yeah, that's pretty much where I'm at on that. I'm not adamantly opposed to it, but I just, some of the stuff that the state hands out to us and tells us we have to do. Okay, that's fine, but we're gonna send you a bill for it.
I agree. We didn't try and black it. When Senator K O came, I came and showed him how that public health money has gone down like nine million dollars in ten years. It's ridiculous, the cuts they have passed on to the local health.
But if we have to do it, I mean, if we have to do it, we have to do it.
We don't have to do anything. Why do we have to do it?
Yeah.
It's an unfunded mandate, Sam. What color are they now?
It's a crapshoot. I mean, the doors downstairs look more bronze.
'Cause they were done at a different time and stuff.
Well, they're not, they're not getting the sun.
Oh, yeah.
You don't know how, or they may be getting more sun than...
I like the dark bronze.
Yeah. Give that.
Yeah, if you want us to make it a toy, huh?
I, I'm the tinted, have the windows too.
Oh, the tinted?
I think it's this color now. Those windows are tinted really dark.
They're, they're all tinted?
I think they need to be tinted pretty good to try to keep as much sun out as long as they get bait.
They, he said, that email yesterday, he said that Anna Gregory picked a tint. There's a, oh, let me pull up exactly what it is.
I like the bronze. This, with bronze with that dark bronze, I think is what I would lean towards. Or do the black was energy gray.
They had either of those, they were black.
I thought there was a little bit of brown in bronze tinted.
Brown, it's dark.
No, don't we have somebody to pick this stuff out for?
Jordan Wilson, blah, blah, blah. We discussed the glass great previously. Quaker has a tinted insulated glass unit for all windows that will outperform the current windows by leaps and bounds. So it sounds like that's an ideal...
Yeah.
Whatever one that works for them.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think...
So do we pick that?
I think it's bronze.
Right, one's going twice, bronze?
Dark bronze.
Dark bronze.
Thank you.
No, that's Boozin' Amos, dark bronze.
Run.
Yep.
I am.
Run them down.
Anyway, you have other questions? I was just saying, if you have questions about my positions, I'll put you down in the chat.
Okay.
All right.
Mom says Tom, get a letter.
Will we have here in New York?
I was hoping I'd say tomorrow.
I think, I think it's, I really like to be out here in there. Gosh, we've been busy. All this weather tonight, people are getting that shot.
Yeah, I'll be heading here as well. I'll see if I'm on the way to club in. I'll give y'all. Do we adjourn for a minute?
No.
No?
I'm here.
I didn't.
There's problems. Just get over. I'll stay out in there.
Okay.
Okay.
Where we headed, Dad?
Wherever mom says we are.
Well, we're, we'll go to Capitol and we'll say salaries to the end if you'd like. I tried to do that list for you and I'm sorry, I was gonna send it to you and I forgot. Said to the Christians, I'll look over and make sure I didn't submit anything. So if you wanna go out to your F drive under, um...
Push button.
Yes.
Get caught up there.
Sixteen.
Commission budget.
Sales tax.
I'm sure I'm learning this isn't...
Five years.
What is it, another sales tax?
Yeah.
Around six sales tax. Mission president's budget?
Sixteen.
Sixteen.
Oh. Sales tax, bottom one.
Yeah. And I created a new sheet there for you. I just, I, I know you guys are...
Okay.
We're not.
Okay, you gotta use...
How you up? You can walk in.
Can you see that?
No.
I don't want nobody falling asleep.
A E R two.
Well, you can go up there and sit, sit up here.
Nobody else in here. How do I shrink this down to where I can be a little more on page? Oh, there it is. Remember, it just took me a minute or something.
All right.
I have to ask it in the show.
So, you know, we talked about the different funds and where capital comes from. The first one that we're, not as unusual for us, the general fund, was gonna have a purchase order out there. We actually, ooh, all right. Yes, a transfer made for the windows, so courthouse. So you can see that coming out of that fund. Now, capital, sales tax, again, this is your fifteen percent. Current projects that we're still working on doing, the juvenile, the transfer switch in the jail, security, the website, voting equipment, law enforcement, the Sally Port door, we have an estimate, and the nine-one-one seventy-five thousand that we talked about. Again, these ones in blue, we could potentially take those out, what I've... But you could potentially take those out of different sales tax if you want. And then you go down to the list from all of the people that had requested, and I did it by building. So annex building, priority A for building maintenance was the upgrade of the H B A C system. And it's all up to you guys and that's the estimate right there. And then you see his other ones, if priority was A being the most needed.
I wanna see a thousand dollar chair.
Well, that's the recorder piece and I think there was more than that.
Okay.
I think there were other items, dry race board, rail board.
Chair was a thousand dollar, if I remember right.
Well, then, I mean, so that's the list and you can go to Carnegie Building itself. Of course, you put all of those items as A priority because they're conditionary. So, and estimates are on cost. And again, then you go to courthouse and you have, the As are here and all of them are As, and the treasure ask for, uh, refrigerator amendment. And then the public administrator wants to show in that building. Health department, you know, this is all coming on our five-year plan, but these are in order of A priority.
Five-year plan.
Well, you know, when we try to start that. I mean, what your vision is, where we're... There we go. And then the health department, you know, talks about replacing the two thousand and seven Ford estate. And possibility, if you think maybe give us that, we'll have to work out the details on that for purposes of the enterprise fund versus... So I guess we'll block that out of capital, so maybe we'll have money on that. I'm sorry. And then, um, juvenile, yeah. The juvenile, the next building, the only really main thing that Rick said at first was the piece of tail. That these are short looking, I'm sure. And depending on what you do, this was an estimate of apartment. Again, I never really, Larry wanted to go out there and look at it and give you a real, such as me pulling... out there and look at it and give you a real, such as me pulling it out of the sky.
I think Michael said that there was a plan.
Yes, that potentially.
There you go.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
I said over there.
And then Shepherd's building, I know.
I'll take the juvenile.
Sure.
The generator system, it should really be like two different numbers, not, because we got a price to put pigtails. We've got a generator.
Yeah, we've got a generator.
Okay, okay, I'll just write pigtails there.
If that's a, I'm, the reason I'm bringing that one up is because I'm gonna look at a lot of the As first, and I'm gonna look backwards from there.
Okay.
And with pigtails, to me, I thought it was a pretty expensive thing.
Thirty-five thousand or something, I don't know, something like that. A lot more than I thought it should be. I was thinking ten, but.
That amount is.
I think ten would be, Max is what.
We did it twice, and Beau came in at the sixty, fifty thousand.
Oh, no.
With the generator.
On us, pigtails?
Yeah.
Is this a pigtail?
I'm sure. That's why we declined those bits those two different times.
I was thinking it was thirty-five.
I thought it was thirty-five. Oh, I suppose, okay. That's where that figure comes from. It's nothing more than a pigtail.
Okay. So, you got it noted out there?
Yeah. All right, so there's the Shepherd's building. I think you were talking to Greg about that first, about the meeting, whatever it's.
Well, yeah, we were all talking about that. I mean, I'm not replacing any hanging here. See how cold it is.
And that's the, and then the tables and chairs, four thousand, that Dale was wanting in the meeting room.
Those are the ones we put in there to start with, weren't they? Good quality. They've actually held up from.
Well, could we use like those lifetime tables in there, like folding tables? I mean, are they?
I'll find a folding table.
Well, they make those lifetime tables that have some kind of work or whatever, that they're, you gotta stand up to them.
Yeah, but just because they say lifetime doesn't mean they're life. We got like a one year or something.
But that's the name of it.
But I know what you're saying.
They're called lifetime, it's the brand.
I want to get to one that if there's too much weight set off, they will shock you. That will keep people from sitting on them. Because that's what hurts them tables the most, is people sitting on them. And I'm as guilty as anybody. So, I'd be the first one getting shocked.
And so, we talked about sirens. I, I don't know if that was two or one, but I had.
I think that was one. I think he said like to add one, one siren.
Yeah, he said.
You can put that as a Z.
A Z?
Yes. That was just one though.
Doesn't matter. I prefer you had two.
Well, they talked about four, three thousand. I thought he said.
I had to, I had to put down thirty-five. I thought that was.
I have additional sirens in the difference, and I have two in the question.
I want her.
It'd be cheaper to have a cell phone.
Okay, so that comes to if you did everything.
Or they don't, they don't go away.
Well, they do some of those.
If you did everything, it's one point five. We're gonna skip over, this is a computer list that Dale had given you.
Okay.
So, that is a hundred and four, one hundred and forty-one thousand. Now, EMS capital, that was again the things that Mike came up with. But just looking at the capital for the eighty-five percent, which our current balance, estimate for 2016, you have about one point eight. Current projects and the computer services, please, if you did all those other projects up there, the total expense would be two point four. We're short if you do all those projects by five hundred and eighty-three thousand.
You're talking about everything from A to Z? We ain't doing it.
No, we can't.
Right.
Right. And if you only do priority.
Make sure we're all same page here.
If you only do priority A was, you're at a hundred and eleven thousand.
We can go back and take someone's A's and make the B's too. On the computer things, do we need all of those?
Yes.
You and the assessor stuff?
No, we can talk about that, but assessor fund, we have to buy statutes that we do as planned. We have to pay for this. So, I don't know.
What's, what's the treasurer need to H V stop one factor P C?
Is to replace their current P C system. I don't know. They probably have the, the older.
So, they're in a replacement cycle?
Right. Right. That's what most of it is.
Like, you just not want a couple laptops or something?
Nope. So, these ones in green, yeah, blue hung on, those potentially could come out of the Harden's fund. But again, it really, EMS, we could take that out of capital for EMS, if you guys do that. And that was the backup.
Absolutely. EMS's server, yeah, definitely. I come by EMS.
Well, that is the backup for doing one in taste and going to cloud based thing that Dale was talking about. That's where I.
Which one was Adam's?
This.
I have sixty-eight.
Sixty-eight? Oh, the twenty-one?
Twenty-one thirty.
If it has anything to do with EMS, then I think yes. Put that in there, not in the capital improvement.
Yeah. I just want Dale to be in charge of those kinds of things.
That's fine.
You know, that's the problem with that.
We're in charge of EMS and budget anyway, so that one's different than saying, okay, it's gonna go into the tax maintenance fund or whatever.
I mean, just because Mike did bring us his capital request, I mean, if it's something that they need to do, it's.
And we can also do a couple of works.
While we're on computer sales tax here, on computers, the, I'm gonna go back to the poll books.
In mind, do you do that?
Those poll books, those, those basically just little mini computers, right?
Yeah.
But they're five-year old. To reuse them. I like having a big computer in here for doing this stuff. Like, what got meetings, we could just use them little poll books in here. I mean, you don't have a laptop either besides that one. You have one that you use when you take home, or you take that great big sucker home?
I use my one at home. I have one that.
Oh, you use your own at that company. I just think we can reuse them somehow. If we go out and try selling them, if I have some fun getting something for them.
I have my cap reg and stuff, I get the store.
We could get rid, get rid of those. I wouldn't, I haven't one to take to, because we have meetings down like at city hall, and getting on there wireless and have it seated and carrying this big thing around. Don't like making copies for meetings all the time. Everybody's getting it now. Hey, if you want a copy of your agenda and notes, make it yourself and bring it along with you. I did it. So, I just, that's just me personally. Sorry, I got off on that.
Well.
You want to talk about public works there, Debbie?
EMS was getting all geared up, and the health department kind of disposed, I think, and then was visiting.
Well, anytime we do circle with property or try to dispose of something, they should be going out to the departments first and saying, hey, is there anybody that can use this before we try and sell it?
And Jennifer does. And I would feel a little safer doing that if our other departments used them.
Well, I can tell you that the sheriff's department has every gadget and is trying to decide.
And that becomes all of them, becomes very frustrating for Dale, because a lot of this equipment is old, and they'll get viruses on them, and then he could spend a day getting a virus out of one of them. And it's fine, that's his job. But how many PCs does he personally know?
What's it getting virus on for?
Ah, because they connected to something legitimate.
So, you're saying public works could come out of their?
Yes.
Sales tax?
They don't have a sales tax, but they can take work. They would, there are two hundred, but I'm not exactly sure where.
Would they have it in there to pay for it out of?
Right. I don't, they have.
Does he look like he's doing?
Yes, they have a computer line, but you need to pull up their budget. I, I'm pretty sure he has this list of things already in that computer line that.
I don't, I don't know. I don't need to go there. I mean, I just leave it in, in there. I mean, but EMS for me, goes EMS.
Okay.
And public works, we can pick for. I'm good with doing all those.
My suggestion would be to, though, leave the, I know the hundred and forty-one is definitely things that we need.
Right.
But this is also where if a computer goes bad in the middle of the year, or printer goes bad in the middle of the year, this is where most likely those things are coming from.
This is the only one.
Well, but I thought, no, I thought Dale had two hundred thousand dollars in, in the budget, and is to spend.
No.
This is out of his particular budget. He has a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, but it's already scheduled for maintenance on all the other software.
So, I, I think you need to leave a cushion in here for those unexpected things. You know, server goes down, you're talking ten, ten thousand dollars in the middle of the year to replace the server. I mean, it's not like it's.
Well, I don't see it spending all the money, so I don't know. Maybe you just want to leave a placeholder?
Yes, right.
Of twenty grand?
Uh, no, seven hundred and forty thousand total. And computer services.
But I'm saying that you probably need to up that a little bit and leave.
One fifty?
One fifty.
Take that out.
I think we need to take EMS and public works out. Public works has its own tax fund. I'm gonna pick on them just as much as I'm gonna pick on EMS, sheriff's department, assessor, anybody that's got their own fund coming out, I'm gonna pick on them the same. I think we gotta do that with our own departments, so.
But I do want to caution that we do get money back from that fund for computer services. We base that on what the maximum set says, not only Dale's cost, or how much space they are, and on purchases that he pays. So, one way or the other, it's just gonna wash you again. Because either we're gonna charge them for it.
That's even more reason to put it on there, is because we're getting money back from them. Public works will not get money back from them.
Yes, we are. We charge them computer services. So, one way or the other.
I mean, EMS, EMS has its own sales tax that has money set aside for capital costs.
Okay.
Public works is paying a fee to general fund for computer services to cover their portion.
Okay.
So, it makes.
Stop before you go too far.
So, we can't, we can't take the assessor portion and take it out of assessor fund, because he's paying for computer services.
I don't know. I, I, we could. It's just, it would reduce that amount for that.
Do we charge EMS the same computer fee like we do public works, their fund?
We charge the enterprise fund, but we don't charge.
They're, they're gonna need to pay capital. Capital.
If we're charging them, then, okay. Explain to me the difference between public works and EMS then.
We have a sales tax for EMS that could be used for how that ballot was issued, which we particularly use now to fund the enterprise fund. But we do use it also to buy capital. We use it for first responders. We use it for 911. This is, could legitimately be paid out of that. Rome Bridge, they just have, what you wanna call it, enterprise fund and operations, and they have to use it all for that. They don't have a sales tax fund feeding them. They have a tax.
They have a property tax.
Property tax levy on them, but it's all.
Do they not have a sales tax fund? We have an absent sales tax.
That's in there. I'm just talking about their fund for public works.
We've never used their eighty-five percent to buy computer things. The only capital things we've used for their capital improvement portion of the sales tax is actual equipment and actual roads. We've never used it for computers or anything like that.
Never really had computer for the works. So, I mean, we buy the software, we buy all, I mean, they have some.
Most of the time, if they need a computer or something, public works is buying it. But I think they didn't get the heads up on this twelve thousand, so it did not turn the budget in, in their budget.
And this is our IT guy saying, this is the right one to use. So, it's not, it's not them driving it. It is IT driving it.
Everybody got one?
If anything, I want to go.
I'd take the EMS out, but I, I don't know. I think I'd leave public works.
And if we're gonna take one out, I think we take both out. I mean, I understand your explanation. I don't, maybe I don't understand.
I'm gonna take the EMS and leave the public works too.
There you go. You got to have a do it that way. Move on.
All right. All right. Can I read the bottom line at one twenty or one thirty?
I'd make it one fifty. Just have a contingency.
I think, yeah.
I mean, but we, you know, we got control of that, whatever. I mean, we're not gonna spend it all, but if you want a placeholder, that's fine.
And really, that's all I want with this budget on the whole capital scenario, is a placeholder.
We control that also.
Right.
Right.
I'd like to go ahead, talk about which ones we want to try to do.
Oh, okay.
Be good, Jennifer.
Do we want to start at the top and just work our way down and just go yes, no, maybe, and then go back to the yeses and add them up, and then?
That's fine.
Yeah.
The maybes, we can talk about.
Go with that.
Okay. Obviously, the ones that are already there. Do you have any interest in me taking the generator switch out of the law enforcement fund? Are we, since we started that project, should we just pay that project? And that being the same as the Sally Port door?
That's in the old jail. It's not in their building across.
The ninety-five hundred?
It's in the, down in the old jail.
Yeah, leave it.
Leave it in ours. Leave it in ours. Okay. The 911 cost, do you wish you liked it to come out of the EMS? Whenever that bill comes, the EMS, the sales tax.
That's coming from there and have it from the sheriff?
No, that is for extra equipment. That's not the end.
This is for their equipment upgrade, the one sign. And right now, it's not totally done.
Is this totally EMS related?
Yeah.
Well, the radio upgrade for the 911.
But that, that EMS can't be, it's EMS capital, does not have to be just EMS enterprise fund. It is.
Emergency medical services, that was true, yeah.
I think you would be safe to take it out there. I don't think there would be any that, you know. We pay for 911 cost out there, so why wouldn't this upgrade come out there?
We'll pay for 911 cost out of the sheriff's budget.
We will be.
We will.
No, this is the regular related to their services, right? It's the law enforcement and EMS, right?
You could split the cost there also.
Yep. I just need to know if you want it out of our capital or somewhere else.
My feeling is I'd take half out of EMS. And I, I mean, we can take the other half out of the sheriff, but then it's just either more money we're gonna have to put in there or depending on how all that haces out. And we're already hitting him for the, his half, but he hasn't been paying forever, and he still don't have, hasn't been in there yet either. So, we can put it in there, but I don't want to give him any more money to just put that in there. I don't know. Is there nothing, his contingency that we could, the sheriff has a contingency in his, take it out of his contingency, Lord's contingency or something?
Yeah.
Is that what you guys want to do?
I don't know. I don't want to sit down and talk to him about it.
I think the sheriff's folks.
I'm sure he's listening right now anyway, but I know I was chairing when I added more bills to him. But I'm, I'm huge on they've, they've got their funding, and you need to find a way within it to make it work. We're, we did a good job last couple of years. It's also black members in here, so.
As far as you guys have contact with 911, that can give us some breakdown of those calls, and we can make sure that the fifty-fifty split is correct. To kind of go through the total calls that are coming in to 911 for the county, and we can see that the fifty-fifty split is the way we should be doing it, and it's not seventy-five, twenty-five.
So, it turns out for more sixty percent.
Right, right.
EMS, forty percent.
Yeah, that's what I did.
Thank you.
I thought we had that some.
We were supposed to be getting me that, but I don't, it's tied up, so.
And this is a one-time cost too. You know, on this one, I'm fine with us working with the sheriff's fund on this one. You know, three years down the road, if they gotta do something, I'll upgrade again. I might be on totally different page. But to move on from this one, we're gonna put half in EMS.
And us put a half.
And then that, us do half from, from capital.
I'm kinda worried about that, but.
I'm fine with that on this one.
Yeah.
If the sales tax numbers keep going up, we're in good, good shape there.
Okay. So, then, do we go down building by building? We can talk about it now? I mean, this obviously won't be a red light for, to start bidding unless you want. My biggest thing is there's a lot of things that come up in the year that we need to be having contingency for.
If we say yes to them right now, that doesn't mean we'll bid on tomorrow.
Okay.
That's my say on it. We still have to make this money over the next, you know, year.
Are we putting a lot of money currently into H V A C? Are we having issues with it, or it's just age of it, working the United States?
This building is, I can tell you, it costs us more money to heat and cool than courthouse does.
But is that gonna get better with new windows and things like that?
Probably will soon.
I hope so. I would mind waiting till the windows are done before we do the control system and see maybe if that had something to do with it, if you got air moving in and out of places that are not supposed to be.
And that's why.
Anything in my office.
I mean, the bigger ones, I think, are harder for me to swallow. You know, obviously, we're not gonna do the carpet and paint, air and annex, and that the windows are done, so that will be a later next year decision.
Are we leaking on the roof?
I think that hurts. I think we have some roof issues on the annex and Carnegie that maybe we ought to try to bid those together.
That's why I was saying outside the bathroom.
And then, I know there's several people that are needing chairs. I'd like to see us bid those, and I'm not gonna give people a blank check to go out and buy a chair.
Well, you can do all the office room. You can do the credentias, the bookcases, the chairs, get them all.
Well, and it could be that we get a better price if we buy more. You know, if we can find a chair that everyone would agree on, we might get a better price. If we buy ten chairs versus buying one chair.
You know, I don't think everybody gets a choice. I think we find a good chair and we decide what chairs are good.
I know Steven's already got one coming. I think the, 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 the directions. And I told him this because I had, I said, I just wanna see what he's got.
Right.
If he wants those.
Do a new one.
Yeah, MBE, that's-
They make chairs?
No, they have a, they have a whole sales force that go out to the old National Guard on industrial and look at all the stuff. I mean, you can get flash, you can get, they have furniture, they have flags, they have-
So, yeah, I'd like to see us, you know, knock out some of these smaller ones, like upgrading light fixtures. I think that would be a good project to do.
That exterior picture, the interior picture?
I think it's interior. I mean, even this replacement of the boiler and pumps at Carnegie, you know, it's not a huge dollar one. Thirty-five thousand.
And again, these are industrial.
Right.
And if I could, I'm just gonna say those because yesterday afternoon, I had got the mold perm renewal and I put it on the agenda for next week for you guys to see. In talking to Red John and going out, I had to tell a lot about paperwork on our buildings and Greg helped me with that, about the age of our roofs, when they were replaced, when we fixed them, everything. HVAC, A, this building. We're kind of hard time with anybody that would wanna bid if we haven't touched a roof at some point in the last fifteen years. I'm like, well, hey, the roofs are supposed to last sometimes, you know, fifteen, twenty years. And especially slate roofs like this from the last twenty-five years.
A lifetime.
Yeah. But he said at some point, they needed to see that we had done some work on it. Because I guess in the insurance market, that is-
We have done work on that one.
And I said that in different spots, yes. So, but he was more or less looking at the Carnegie building and he was looking at the Health Department building. So, if I could just say that. He doesn't think mold perm came in with a great renewal. Just so you guys know, I haven't got it all figured out, but it's like a two percent increase and that's the recommendation we're gonna go with. But they are looking at that kind of stuff, but.
I think we're gonna have to replace a roof on the Health Department next spring. I know it would, Greg patched it, and I think, I think he had Weathercraft do it. Next it is, it's pretty well shot, so.
And they were looking at the Carnegie and Health, for sure. It doesn't mean that when we bid it next year, the premium will be lower if we replace the roof. I can't say that.
So, as we go down here, I mean, I think we have to look at replacing the handrails over the courthouse.
And I've had more attorneys coming in to ours. In fact, Donnell's husband was saying that we're, we're wicked, we held liable those sidewalks.
I mean, the repair and painting of the wall to the courthouse, I mean, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
We don't wanna do any of that to them.
No, I don't have any.
I realize that, but I mean, I'm just thinking, are they in that bad a shape or?
Well, I think it's because they're the plaster walls. They have a detailed painting. I mean, it's not just like, let me go in with one color and paint it. Carvings and borders, it's painted.
It's a plaster. It's a bad thing when you have plaster. Because you start chipping some out of the way so that you can fix it right.
And then it falls off.
Yeah, and then you got a new piece to replace. I don't, that's gonna be something we need to look at too. Some of them, they just wanna pick a room and fix a room at a time.
Like Maryland.
Do it right. Yeah.
I was thinking about whether it's not much.
Yeah, that hundred and twenty-five should go a long ways though.
I would say, yeah.
That's a huge number there. I won't even know if I would put that as an A. I think I would put that as a B, C, and D maybe to do over, you know, the next ten years. I think the sidewalks, just because it gives it curb appeal too. But then, before we do that, part of it is, when we decide what we're gonna do with the old jail, we're gonna go up with it. Some of that included some sidewalks on the, I guess, the west side around the northwest. So, maybe we look at doing high street.
The sidewalks and everything are really bad.
But I think when you look at doing the high street side, maybe this year, parts of that will be a little by little. Maybe this year, do the west side sidewalks.
We need to do something with the, the public sidewalks out there too. Talked to CMDs when we were finding their trails, and I said, you need to come up and take a look at those 'cause again, those are-
Yeah, you got a warning.
Well, I know, but I mean, just, we need to do something with those 'cause again, you're, you're just asking for somebody that.
They didn't do sidewalks all winter. What's their aim?
Well, according to the city, there's city sidewalks everywhere else except for in front of the courthouse, and none are ours, so.
And they won't clean them. That's, Greg, they stop at the library. When you're watching, watching a clean snow, they stop at the library. And then Greg has to do hours to the alley. But then we had one of our security guards last winter when we had snow, you know, they, they walked through the alley, fell on the, so we, I kinda jumped the city. And I said, you know, that's your liability when somebody falls in the alley, even though, you know, and, 'cause it wasn't in our parking lot, it was in that alley. So, it's, it's-
Well, it's their liability for if somebody falls down, they should walk, walk everywhere. Well, you can't push the snow everywhere.
No, no.
Because the right streets ain't closed.
I think that alley, that alley down there in the back, these three, three servants. Yeah, but they're gonna-
They're gonna have to pay.
I can remember. I'm staying brown.
I'll tell you, after going down to that little west.
We're trying to change the way to count.
Have we gotten any bids on sidewalks?
Soon they got back.
No. That's just the best.
So, I like, you know, treasures, credenza, and refrigerator, I'm okay. Probably been treasure shelves or credenza, whatever she wants, just as long as we kinda did that stuff and it's not like it's over.
He should be able to get a mini fridge for like a hundred dollars.
Right.
They got a Walmart, they sell those for, for the apartment, for storm rooms. Eighty-nine thousand.
Do they not have a break room in the courthouse?
They got such a range on.
No, we can't count that one. I understand.
They do down on the second floor, back in criminal, there's a break room in there.
Yeah, that's one that the marshals and bailiff use.
The curb is in criminal, I'm room two hundred across from so good quarter, back from there.
You have to go through that office to get it.
Well, I think I have a little refrigerator in my office.
That's the only great room. The other two are the jury room.
Here's my tip. If I wanted a little refrigerator in my office, I'm not paying for it. I can't even buy one.
We, we, you have one.
I know, I'm old.
You want one, you brought your own. Except for like, you know, only thing over here, then we got this one, and then court has one. I don't know. We need one central cafeteria, like.
I just have trouble paying for a refrigerator in there. Put it down right now. I'll probably vote against a refrigerator. If they want one, they can go get them a cheap one at a running sale. I don't care what. If I don't wanna buy office, I'm gonna go buy one.
But the problem is, electrical. People will keep plugging themselves in and-
Well, we didn't say there's gonna be a plug in. I said they-
We're all expecting more.
Do you realize what that has to do with your electric bill too? Just those, your, those space heaters? I always enjoy getting my bill after you have any Christmas lights at all running too, to get your electric bill on.
You put up Christmas lights?
Yeah.
Okay, let's keep moving. We'll, we'll quicken the cycle under a refrigerator later.
Get myself something nice for Christmas. Do some socks.
Okay, Health Department. Okay, is that bill clean? What we, outside the roof, I mean, do I mark that?
I'm just going by, we, it, they had a pretty bad leak.
Yeah, but you can fix a leak too, though, Sam, but he's got it down as a B. So, I'm not, if, unless it's need to be replaced. My roof's had a couple shameless come looks too, and I patched it in. I'm gonna get as many more years as I can. It needs to be replaced, yes, but I'll, I'll patch it before I put another, you know, five grand into it, into it for now. But do we have it on the list for two years from now or five?
No, that's just the thing. We don't, I mean, we just prioritize them as A, B, and C. We don't necessarily put them in what year we're gonna do what.
And we can definitely just put like four hundred, five hundred thousand in there and then, and then we can come back and talk to you guys about this.
Well, the B could-
I would venture that B was, was done before it started leaking that way it was. Again, again, like I said, Weathercraft came up and looked at it, so it might be that you would just-
He turned his head back and said, please.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, this kinda gets back to the same thing with Carnegie and then, you know, there's some, some huge costs there, so, you know, are we gonna fix up the building? Or are we gonna try to find help a place to go? And so, you know, we talked about getting them a spot, but I mean, there's, there's gonna be two hundred thousand dollars there and that we're gonna put into that building. And it's still not gonna be the space that they need.
But until you find them another space, we've gotta kinda maintain it. I think gonna turn around and sell it. If we find them another space, when you're selling it.
Well, you have, you have to go find them a space. I mean, you know, we can say, well, until we find them a space, well, you know, that could take ten years if you're not looking or, I mean, if you truly wanna find them a space, you know, we could go look at property. We could build them something, but it's gonna pay money. And, you know, we can't just, the further we keep kicking it down the road, we're just dumping money into these places, then, yeah, it's probably long overdue. But at the same time, we're not gonna get anything out of it. I mean, I built these eight thousand square feet. Yeah, I don't know what we could out of it.
Actually, we only have one county department in that building.
I mean, we probably lucky if we could get four hundred thousand dollars out of it. And there's some parking and other stuff there, but I think we all have seats though.
He's talking about Carnegie.
Oh, Carnegie.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were talking about Carnegie. They come out.
There are more, the, the public center, I think, yes.
Right.
Yes, well, okay.
Well-
So, I don't have a problem doing a little bit there, but I mean, if they are packing there, you know, like we all know they are, they gotta find a different place. And it's gonna be hard to do just for them.
I don't know what, I don't know. I'm gonna need to ask Greg about it.
Yeah.
What's that, on the health?
Yeah, whether they're HVAC, if they're having issues or-
Yeah, he says their heat exchangers are rusting. It's a nineteen-seventy-five unit. So, yeah, forty, forty years out of it, you know, probably done, probably not very efficient either. And then it's juvenile. I mean, I think we have to look at that pig tail thing again. You know, I don't like the price of it. That'll do where I'm probably good with Michael's, can you get a gram for the freezer? And I think the parking lot, and I'm, I'm okay with doing a little bit to the bathrooms for fifty grams. It seems like a little much, but.
I think so there's seven bathrooms.
Maybe they get rid of several. They have a closet.
Didn't he say he wanted to try just three windows?
Well, it was his recommendation after they were done with the construction. Just bringing in somebody and just having them do a good cleaning and, and see if, perchance. I've seen those bathrooms. I don't think this is a good cleaning.
It is the floor.
In the bathrooms? No, it's, it's the sinks have some rust in them. There's like the lime rings around the stools, I mean, which you're not gonna get up. Those floors are old linoleum floors. I mean, it looks like something from the sixties. This is what it looks like.
So, but it's the floor and it needs to do sink and toilet.
Yeah, yeah.
So, it's not like you need to move anything or anything like that. You're just replacing the fixtures.
I mean, there's epoxy floors that you can take up that linoleum and put down an epoxy type floor. I mean, that's the best way to do bathrooms.
Especially with, if you do the ones where kids use, it'll probably be a lot.
I thought we're gonna do that too.
Be a lot, a lot easier to clean.
Don't have the grooves and, you know, everything gets in, so.
But it's expensive. We did our bathroom.
Twenty-five thousand for floors? You got screwed.
Well, it's like four different bathrooms and the size of them. You gotta take all those partitions off, you know. We haven't. We just did, we have a prison.
Where at?
At the school.
Well, I thought you meant your house. How many damn bathrooms you got? You got partitions in your bathroom?
Now, what do you do, what do you do for transgender students?
I just, I don't know. I'm not, I'm not big on the bathroom remodel thing. They cleaned up. We've got a whole bunch of the bathrooms there. And just is in bad shape. We better go redo Public Works bathroom too then. You know, they're just terrible shape. I've been out there for it and I have.
Well, then why don't, why don't we, whenever it's done, just see if we can bring in?
I'm okay with that. I mean-
And just let them see, if that, if Michael's happy with that, if they do, then it saves us.
But I guarantee that Magnets or somebody could replace the sink and the toilet. I mean, we gotta take up the floors out.
You're gonna have to do something with the floors.
Most floors do.
You just walk on them. We're not eating on them.
So, do-
Got some kids over there, they'd have some, uh, uh, community service. Give them a brush and some Flogs bleach and get to work, get those rubber gloves.
I think, I think Greg's tried some of the-
Well, I'm sure, and of course, you know, it's different if the employees are using it. They should have their own bathroom. If the kids are using it, I mean, the kids are probably peeing on the floor and everything else just on purpose, so. You know, why, why have a nice bathroom for kids if it's just gonna tear it up?
Are you guys gonna agree and spend, uh, we can get some bids on somebody coming in and cleaning? You gonna hear that? It's on there too.
I think if, I think if that would make, if that would satisfy Michael where we didn't have to do the bathrooms for a while.
Well, let's not give us the truth.
It would, it would, uh, I know Sam Radel does that now. He, he's talked to me. He'd like to get. And I mentioned a couple other names, Greg and he's, they're crooks, yeah.
Well, he could get some estimates.
Yeah, he could get.
I'm not saying yes to it. He has estimates.
Yeah.
All right.
That's called parking lot. I'd like to see what that's gonna cost too.
Okay, I'll wait for when we get back.
Hopefully, we can, if we do something with EMS, uh, um, their vehicle, you know, definitely, maybe pay their vehicle, put it over to Health or something. But, I mean, that's kinda, I don't know, that's, uh, so.
Well, I guess you need to talk about EMS vehicle first, if you want to buy a new QRV.
I'm struggling with that. I don't know if there's anything wrong with that.
No, they would be adding, supposedly adding additional QRV and getting rid of that explore. That explore that, that my price would be available somewhere else. He would take the old QRV and then a new QRV would come in and say, well-
I don't, I don't understand that there's anything wrong with North East Drive. I know he can't transport somebody in a, like, QRV, but I don't know why we need two QRVs. He has one on call. He has one out in the field or somewhere where the ambulance can't get to. All he needs is one. We don't run into that that often. get to, all he needs is one, we don't run into that, that often.
Unless you can dispatch those and send an ambulance to a call.
We don't need dispatching ambulants anyway. That's what we make do, and that's why I feel it's a frustration, that the QRV is supposed to get there and say, "Oh, never mind, turn around, we don't need you, we'll save some money."
I think as we transition though, I think, you know...
That, that comes out of their past then.
I think it's a good idea, I'd like to see two QRVs out there running, do as much as possible.
But are you gonna run? I guess my thought is, if Mike's gonna be in one, is it gonna be running? I mean, I think two QRVs may be a good solution, but I think they need to be running all the time, and I don't know if Mike driving a QRV is going to get it out on the road as much as it's supposed to be.
We tell him that he's, have his butt in it, have his computer in it?
Or if it's every day, it's bad.
There's, there's no reason, there's no reason if they couldn't sit wherever all day long, type on their computer, and they're accessible all the time, I mean, there's no reason they even have to sit in Southridge. So, I mean, if they need to go back there for something, that's fine, but I, I think to get two of them running, for a better presence and portion provision on, on the job, its assistance, it's, you know, when we're in the city, we get fire to help us, you know, once we step outside the city, we have no help whatsoever, so maybe if they're person to help load or do whatever, or...
They have first responders, you have the fire departments, they show up at the, outside the city when it's due.
Well, most of the time, but most of the time those first responders work jobs too, so it's not, it's not, it's not...
The first responders are still gonna be the first ones, cause a lot of them are working, well, they have staff at the fire department that show up. The one down in those H-bands, I saw the QRV come in, or come by, I was working at that, so, you know, I was trying to see it all, emotional, so I followed it, got down there, saw what happened, they had about six trucks out there in the field where an ambulance basically couldn't go, and then the QRV was there too, so they really did have plenty of help there. I, I, I mean, I think the QRV was a good idea, I don't really think it's doing anything that we have to have two of them. Now, I could be wrong, we have a high storm, then you need about three of them, or a big snow, you, you, you need three of that one time, or I think once.
You did have a rotation schedule, a hundred and six years, you drive first vehicle all the time, and the QRV's... Now, how many miles did he have on that? Oh, I don't know, four, four, I know. I don't know, yesterday, I think, so I'm excited.
I don't disagree, I wouldn't mind having two if they were being used for what we were...
If they're being used, that's right.
Yeah, that's Mike's opinion, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm...
So, it's, it's more of a direction from us, is that, when you see these running all the time.
That's, yeah, that's why, when I'm disagreeing with you, I agree but disagree on that, so if we can figure out the direction we need to go with and exactly how it's gonna be running, I don't think it needs to be sitting in, okay, I bring up blows, cause I, I used to see it there, well, I've not seen it there in the last several times, so, I picked on it. Uh, I just, I just hate seeing...
You can have, you can have it at the jail, I mean, Eric, you know, Mike's talking about keeping an ambulance there, but some of these calls over to, to, uh, the towers, uh, that QRV might be able, that might be all, you know, there's a fire, fire trucks go there regardless.
The thing is, they have to dispatch the ambulance to it, and I understand that, if that was my grandma and my mom over there and they fell down, if you don't dispatch it right away and you're trying to figure out if it's a true emergency or not, that one minute or two minutes or three minutes is essential.
Well, so, there's, when those calls come in, they, they have a code, there's a code one, two, or three, and code three is life threatening, and it's automatic handles. And a code two is non-life threatening, but pretty serious, and a code one could be a whole slew of things, but it's, it's not a life threatening.
It just...
But yours has an accident local?
I have no idea.
So, currently, the EMS director, does he take his vehicle home?
Yes.
Do you still see that happening with the QRV, or do you see the QRV staying in service?
It could be either way, it could be out, whatever direction we want.
I, I'm just looking at mileage, I mean, the mileage on the Explorer for being the age that it is is only forty-two thousand dollars, so, I mean...
Model?
Yeah, it would still be usable somewhere, it's just deciding on whether or not that QRV is the option that you wanna use for the director. I don't know that it's gonna be cost effective if it's gonna be traveling outside of service.
Yeah, outside of service.
Like if he continues to take a vehicle home, if he, the second QRV is traveling home with him.
But he's, uh, more of a twenty-four hour on the phone night position.
If there were vehicle that would come in the middle of the night where they actually need additional support, I guess...
Versus, uh, I guess five type of directors, you know, why Larry, Larry could take his own back and go and...
He's twenty-four though, because we have storms and stuff.
So, it's just, it's a matter of how we want that QRV to run, I'm not sure that it really runs, needs to run that much after six or seven o'clock, but, I mean, if we, you know, we start adding people, a lot of people, if we start running, you know, if we have two different supervisors that run our QRV seven days a week, you know, that will be, uh, if I run ten or twelve, run opposite shifts or whatnot, run twelve hours a day. You know, that would take care of one QRV and then Mike would run the other one, but anyways, we need some clear direction on how we want them to operate if we do that.
My thing is, is, I, I mean, that's gonna determine whether or not you take that Explorer out of service for EMS and move it somewhere else, is what your direction is on that QRV and how you're gonna use it.
Right.
Cause it, it's got low miles, so it could either be used in ambulance service, or we could repurpose it to the health department, but you need to have a clear direction on how you want those vehicles to work before you decide to take it out, cause it still has plenty of life left in it, if you wanted to leave it at EMS.
Right, so you're, here, here's where I'm at with the QRV, I mean, it, it does Mike part, no, anybody's no good to have an Explorer that you can't have certain equipment in it to do something, I mean, if, if one of them goes down, we're, we're down to zero, and, uh, you know, or if Mike has to respond to a, a major incident or whatever, and we need all those tools, you know, it's just like having the correct full tools, you gotta have all the tools that you need, so, you know, it's just, why have some other vehicle that's not outfitted? I mean, that, that doesn't make any sense, that'd be like having an ambulance with half the stuff in it. Or having, or having a little ambulance for little people.
I mean, we're, we're, we're getting lately, are these, these people that are over seven hundred pounds.
It's not the little people, it's the bigger people.
I mean, I think it has, I think he's got a bag in it, I mean, I don't know, I mean, he's got radios, he's got some other things, but correct, it doesn't have the thing where he can transport, uh, a patient in there, but...
But it is equipped to respond to a call, we just can't transport patients.
I, I'm not sure on that.
It definitely doesn't have all the, uh, equipment, equipment like, uh, shocking somebody or whatever, all the medicine, so...
If they would take a car, if you could use that to transport the, the mental patients and stuff like that, it might be more...
If your vision is for him to be on the road more, and, and you want him to be responding to stuff, then that's, that's the solve, the immediate, yeah. But if your vision for him is to just, uh, go and check out the situation, but if you want him to be actively involved in the situation, then QRV is...
I think his, he, his, his job is really more administrative, but there's gonna be time when he could probably be, you know, we, we probably could, would need him.
So, in your intuition though, Sam, wouldn't you need a QRV if he possibly, I mean, you wouldn't want it to be sitting there for the occasional call if you wanted to check a QRV, wouldn't you want it in service during the good time?
During the day, if he's there at Southridge, would he have to keep a vehicle there to use, I mean, he uses it during the day?
You could do that too, if you needed, if you felt like you really needed a QRV, then they could be available for the, the staff to use.
I, I think he has time to respond, I mean, my job at times, this job or other job as administrator for this, times its hands off, and so, you know, if you're not doing anything, we'll get in there, pitch in, get there, help out, you know, whether it's helping to load a bar, barometric or whatever it is, patient, you know, or, or whatever it is, um, let's, let's dig in, let's, let's get in there, let's work with our crews, see what they're doing.
I'd like to get a count of what kinda calls we do get over at the high rise too, cause I know the fire department says that, that's, the majority of their calls are over there, I think I said like a third on their, their calls, but I, you just, if you're saying they have a one, two, and a three assignment to them and just see, you know, really putting the QRV at, at the jail might be...
And we can hold off...
If you can send, if you can send that to, to half the calls at, at the high rises, that's a lot better than an ambulance with...
Those, those have reduced, I mean, we had the housing authority come in over the two years ago, and, and concerned there, and, uh, they said that those have dramatically come down, um, a part of it was their pull chains that they had over there, people would accidentally pull the pull chain or whatever, and that's saying that was a mercy call coming, so...
Told them if they come on there every time, we start building for everyone, so they started...
Now, if you're downtown, there's just about every day you hear, you hear of going through town.
And that was part of the reason that we brought the, uh, East Truck out of the fire station down here, is cause a lot of their calls were gone.
Yeah, I like, I like the idea, so, yeah, we mentioned my fire.
You guys can definitely hold off on the QRV purchase until later, and all the rest of stuff, we can, we can do all, see what happens.
Well, we're getting down in the weeds with EMS right now.
Right, yeah. Well, it's, it's just you needed to decide that one before you talked about the health department vehicle, so if the, if the Ford Explorer was an option for health department, that would save us from having to purchase an additional vehicle.
And you don't have to make a decision on health department replacement holder.
We can get life promoted.
Very listening to you.
Well, I mean, I know the health department, they can, they can, they can last a mile, but, you know, they can, they can keep using it a little bit longer.
I'm pretty much good with all the other stuff on the EMS, I mean, but we, we are gonna have to get down in the weeds, uh, if we are gonna make some changes and some adjustments there, and, uh, see if we're gonna need other capital items for, at some point.
On EMS?
Mm-hmm. Where is EMS in there?
Kind of down towards the end. A lot of theirs is like, you know, the second part of the luggage device is the next line, the, the cot.
Yeah, that's, we, we already out, we've already approved that.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry.
The luggage area.
No, we, we bought the first round, you know, and, and we, this is a second round, but we still approve that, I mean, um, and then same way with the cots, I mean, you know, we split it over two years, but, that's, we told them that we were probably agreeable with that, but that doesn't blind us.
Yeah, we're not...
Or they may hold their prices for some too.
So, coordinating a vehicle over at health, it would make sense, instead of buying a brand new one, to take Mike's, transfer it over there, and then to go ahead and get an actual vehicle that can be a QRV, that way if we decide to put it into a rotation, like talking, we have it, it's set up. So technically, we're adding half a vehicle. Just leave it in there and then we can, we decide not to do it, we can definitely spend another gap in stuff. I wanna talk more about it, just so I know.
Right, so the nice thing about the QRV is that an ambulance can't run without two people in it, it can't be in service without two, uh, QRV can run with one person, so, you know, if you need a little assistance or whatever, they can run, but you can't just have some one person jump in an ambulance and go.
Well, that's where the discussion needs to come in, do we...
What are we gonna do to, to transport those, you know, you do one driver and then have a...
Probably wouldn't be enough room in there to sit back there and administer.
But that's where the discussion, Mike doesn't need to be in a QRV. I see Mike more as, he can be in a...
Well, he's a nurse for everybody's...
What I'm saying though is, he doesn't need to be in QRV, if he's sitting in a meeting up here in commission meeting, and there's a QRV parked out there along the street for three hours, that doesn't make sense, I mean, that QRV should be sitting somewhere manned. And so, I think Mike can be in a Kia to drive around to meetings and drive back and forth at home. I don't think QRV needs to be used for that purpose. That's where I struggle with that, but we gotta decide if we're gonna do something, we're gonna take his and give it to health department, so...
Well, and that's where I was trying to come from at first, I mean, his Explorer's working for what he's doing currently, and you still see him just running back and forth to different places, you might as well leave the Explorer there, continue to use it, cause it has low mileage, and then if you wanted to add a QRV, you could.
Yeah, I knew that's what we said, his Explorer wants us to buy.
But if you're talking about getting rid of it anyways, then of course the health department's wanting one and it would work better.
That's the same, I mean, it's gonna...
What was the health department wanting, I mean, another guy in truck?
They have twenty-four thousand dollars, I think, I would...
I think they were just wanting a smaller SUV, they weren't wanting, something similar to the Ford Escape that they currently have.
They have some problems with the head blast.
That's one, one of them.
Or they had two of those, the one that I...
Well, they replaced one of those, that was a problem, a lot of share with the truck. And then this is the other one that is just saying...
It has higher mileage.
And of course she had asked about getting an environmental supervisor or something, right? Would that person need a vehicle too, or what?
I think they have, uh, you know, they call them, just whoever needs to use it, use it.
Some motor pool, like a motor pool.
Yeah, they're full vehicles. If Chris needs it to go do some multi-wastereating system inspections and stuff, and, cause that inspires me that too, what do they need a truck for? Well, you start sticking stuff down in a sewer or a lagoon or something, and you want, you want that in the car with you?
I think we should put an operator in there for, let's see the health department, then we decide what...
I would, at this time, rather get the health department one, because I'm not gonna, I, I don't, I'm not gonna put a QRV for Michael to use if we're gonna get one, then let's get another one and figure out how we're on that rotation, that's the sign. Mike's got plenty of miles, he can still use all the stuff.
Four hundred and one thousand.
Forty people, yeah.
Well, you can get them two hundred and forty thousand, I was wrong.
You guys know?
I have two hundred and eighty on my truck, so I'm just there to preach about it, I'll travel around, I've run over enough trees with it, I should get a new one too.
Well, we'll go back to just the capital and sales tax.
I need a new truck, that's why I'm sour.
So, again, you can see that very few accounts, so it's just a matter of placeholders. So, we have that four hundred and fifty in consideration with those two hundred and fifty?
Yes, right, yeah.
So, change that one.
Do you wanna keep a contingency?
About fifteen million.
God, we get damn.
I can't, we're bad with that.
So, the other one you probably should talk about is contingency, you wanna keep a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar contingency, cause then you can just plug it to capital improvement, what you have left.
I think two hundred thousand for that, what's the question?
I guess, I guess it depends, if, if a roof or an HVAC system goes bad and you didn't plan to replace it, what would you need to replace something big like that?
Right, well, and if we don't have the money in capital, we take it out of reserves.
Right, so that's what you need to keep in reserves, is, is if I had a big project that happened in the middle of the year and it completely went out, what would I need to...
But in turn, there's a lot of progress that we could be doing, this is the last of the five years of sales tax.
Right, what you need to do...
We don't want to set what the reserve is.
We need to do with as many as we can, right, whatever you're gonna, so, I mean, if a major expense happens, we have healthy reserve, we can pay it, right?
Right.
So, we got too many dollars sitting out there somewhere, but...
Yeah, so I'm thinking two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand in, do you see it's probably... Yep, so I'm thinking 200, 250,000 in HVAC is probably...
I could...
That's fine.
Yeah.
There's no, there's no point keeping 450 in there and then I spend it.
So, then you need to change your capital...
You can only get enough.
But I don't like that, so, just take, take the 760, then bump your figure up.
Okay, so basically that was sales tax. I mean, again, that doesn't give anybody a purpose to go out and buy all those things, buy mine unless you put, it's helping out.
No.
Okay.
So, on that spreadsheet, did you kinda highlight something that we talked about? What was the couple that we had, cause I think we used to say, like you said, is a fifth year of the sales tax, and I think we need to spend, do as many things as we can, make sure, try to get that down. Oh, you didn't highlight it, right?
I did highlight it, but...
Can we put some in a pump for the old jails that we're gonna do there, just start building up something to be able to do something with it eventually? You can put it in there, and then if you do have burn tea, I don't wanna say that it's necessarily gonna be used just for that, but it's gonna be a big dollar project. And then it's kinda like a reserve with a... My purpose.
Yeah.
I see what you're getting at, but I see our reserves or the general revenue fund.
Okay, I know the difference, or actually, the health department, if we're looking at moving them. And I'm not saying it's gonna happen tomorrow by any means, but if we find the right thing that comes up in two years, then we wanna pull the trigger. We don't have enough money to sit there and go get them. And that's kinda the intention right now, is to try to find something different.
Right.
We never did set a price tag, did we? We earmarked something for that for facilities.
So, the key thing to look at there is, most of your special revenue funds, like the sales tax funds, are restricted in total. So, they're restricted for capital improvements, public works is restricted for public works. So, you can earmark money in those funds and it's still restricted. When you get to general funds, if you would decide to say, I'm gonna put this much aside for a health department renovation, you are committing those funds. Because when you all vote on the budget, you're taking a vote to commit those funds to that line item.
Could you just do something that just says county facilities, which could be, give the old jail or the health department?
You, you could, the same respect though. Like if you decided down the road that I need to spend that on something else, you're...
Computers for whatever reason, if something blows up.
Right, you've kind of committed those funds, cause general fund is unrestricted at the moment. We don't restrict anything in there unless we are going through a thing yet, this is in your budget to be used on the health. You know, it, at that point is...
And I'm fine with that. I'm fine with saying, you know what, if I don't run next year, or I don't win next year, I put $200,000 in this fund just for doing something with facilities, for improving the workplace, or whatever you wanna call it, workplace improvements, workplace expansion.
And that's fine, I'm just telling you, cause when it comes to the budget, it's one thing, but when it comes to financial statements, it's something different. So, that fund balance at the end would actually be reported as a portion of it being committed. Where right now, it's unrestricted and you report it.
I'm just kinda just leaving it in the contingency.
Cause there's, there's different levels. There's committed, assigned, and it all depends on how you all go through and actually vote on things, but it could be seen that if you are voting on the budget to be approved with that amount in there, you are at that point committing that money. And you would actually have to formulate, formal vote to take it out of the...
County facilities and their camp infrastructure.
I hear, environmental funding is restricted, you're obligating future construction, which, you know, it's okay, but, you know...
I would rather not obligate it. I would rather just, just say that we were building reserves to do future county facilities or whatever, just the way it's not restricted, but have some kind of intent of, you know, we realize these are some issues and we...
Well, we know that somewhere down the road, we're gonna have to, the health department, we know somewhere down the road, we're gonna have to some, the jail.
Just the ones we highlighted was only 147,000.
That's all?
Yeah, now that's not including, that's just your sales tax, that's not EMS, that's not the computer stuff. Yeah, that's not the computer stuff, that was just... See, those three there in blue, those three, and that one, and that one.
Get those couple roofs in there.
I was gonna say, I think you want roofs at Carnegie? Or one, one roof at Carnegie? That's about Carnegie and Carnegie.
There's also one on the annex yet.
Let's have Greg, when Greg gets back, let's have, let's have Greg.
So, the health, the annex, and Carnegie. I mean, I think there's something that, I'm not saying that we're gonna need to do them, but I think we ought to at least look at, the rubber roof, 32,000. I think those are just ones that we license on a bid and see where they come in. It would be nice if we could bid all three of them together, because I think we're gonna get a better, you know, it's a bigger project, we get a better number, and so...
I think you probably need to think about the same thing if you're thinking about the HVAC stuff. I mean, I think if you can group some of those buildings together into one large project, that you might get a better...
We're still, we're gonna, and we stopped, and we said everything, so...
Well, and that doesn't include any of the projects you're gonna carry forward from here, but earlier, right?
And you're, I don't know...
We're always gonna have someone that's gonna shoot craps unexpectedly.
We need to add another 750,000 to that. Exploring was 75, well, it's not 70 anymore, is it? We paid half of it. Well, whatever. Right, it's still my cash, but... Right, I paid half of that one. And some of those, I think we have, have that, what's I answered? Now that I know that, I can give you a more, I would suggest. Um, besides capital, we have salary.
Perfect.
And we also have, are you guys willing to talk about any other capitals before we move on?
Well, I'm just gonna ask. Public Works has been renting, um, equipment, and I hate it, and I truly hate it. So, is there, is it possible to use some of these funds to help them purchase something?
Own it to them, you mean?
Well, didn't they say they were talking to the people they're renting from, or like a lease purchase option?
Hell, yeah. So, we've been...
We've been leasing for a long time, they do that already, but...
Yeah, we've been leasing for three years, $3,000 a month, so it's $36,000 a year. So, we've spent a hundred grand in the last three years on leasing equipment. Two different pieces, grand, maybe more than that, I don't know, totally, but we got that big loader, and then we got the excavator, so, anyway, but I just, I just don't see continuing to lease there.
Are they leasing, I haven't looked, I know it seems a little bit, are they leasing for a large portion of the year? I mean, are we...
All year, all that more.
All year, yeah.
That, that's happening this year, usually if you have...
Usually we go back, but I mean, the excavator especially, they just keep it, I mean, they, they use it a lot, but at the same time, you know, the loader, they use it all winter, I mean, they get it in November and it stays till April, whatever.
I usually lay that up to Larry and him guys, because I have issues with leasing too. Well, now we're leasing trucks at the sheriff's department too, but he did his homework on that, so, well, we tried. So, sometimes leasing, I guess, is, there is an advantage to it. The one that we've had for a year though, I think, is, we really need to look at.
Yeah, well...
Cause if it looks like we'll need it for a year, or even if it's sitting there for two months that we're not using it, is it worth just buying it then?
Right. Well, that's where I'm at, I just, you know, how, how long have I been bringing this up and talking about it? It's been two years. And, you know, we need to find a way to either buy something that's, you know, leased out or, or something, but...
Well, have we done any cost benefit? I mean, like what the cost of a new one is, and right now, we're not paying any maintenance or anything like that on the ones we're leasing, correct?
Right.
So, I mean, we probably need to sit down and compare the two and see at what point is the least, not, not a benefit.
Yeah, I guarantee it's not that, but...
Well, within those sales tax too, they do have heavy input that, you know, that was just a list of what they had already anticipated for next year.
Right. So, they're, they're gonna, you know, take lots of that truck, they use that a lot, it just gets there a lot, you know, but even though the stuff that they do use a lot, they're using this big excavator a lot, and they've got all the equipment to go around, move it. And so, yeah, it's, yeah, it's probably a couple hundred, 300,000 dollars of equipment, that's why we're paying that much in rent too.
I mean, it depends if you wanna get your projects done here. I think they need to find a, within their budget to purchase them. If you're talking about sending it out of our 50% of the capital, then I think we become very excited, we have a lot of buildings that are, I don't know, prepared for, we need to prepare for it too. And the next five-year sales tax, you know, you still have to, you guys still have to decide that.
Right.
You know, they have...
I, I hear what you're saying, but I mean, we would kick in some of these projects...
Are we leasing that by the year, or do we have, do we have like a...
Just a month.
By the line, okay.
And like quarterly?
You can...
It's just a, you can just call them any time and they'll come get it, take it back. It's probably not even agreement, it's just, you keep it, you have it all month, but you firm up, so...
Well, I'm gonna switch back before that.
But, anyway, I mean, there's a lot of these capital projects that we've been looking at, that have been on this list for three years, so we've addressed some of the bigger ones, but some of them are still there, and we, we could try to do them all, but I don't think all of them either.
Well, I guess the biggest one to think question still in all the sales tax is the capital avenue street case.
Yeah, that's supposed, that's supposed to happen.
It is?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
I mean, the last, I talked to Eric, said the city was maybe having a hard time coming up with their, their...
I don't think we were doing that.
That's one of the city county, one of the city county projects is, is...
I think that's the last one of the city county, water deal.
We've never committed to that.
I don't think so, cause I won't move our streetscape, I ain't paying for...
We haven't committed to any of those.
I ain't paying for park benches and my streetlights.
No, no, that's, that's, but that's not...
It's what that streetscape is, we'll buy trees.
No.
We can buy trees.
They, they put them on the list and, you know, but they never, till they're ready to come ask us for money, they don't ever include us, so... I mean, it's, I don't know, we haven't, we haven't agreed anything to be designed on that, have we?
I don't know, something you guys did before.
I mean, I think it was on the list.
That was on the wish list?
There's a whole lot on the list, there's wobble extension and all kinds of stuff. I was just wondering if you still have any of that stuff.
Capital avenue street case, $100,000. And then there's also a cooperative project reserve that they, they budgeted for it, but, and then, then we closed that.
Oh, I was just like, there was a 300,000, that hasn't been committed to yet.
That cooperative project reserve, I think, is also reserved for capital avenue street case, so for all is about half a month.
Our portion, wow. And stadium Jefferson was only a million. I imagine it was that much, how many blocks is that?
Capital?
How far were they going?
See, I don't know, I just know, when we've been meeting with the city and, and looking at joint, yeah, looking at joint, yeah, and I think that is part of the NSP, but I know we're, you know, talking about joint city-county projects.
I knew it was Lafayette going next, but I don't know how far.
Yeah, I don't know. I think it is part of that.
I know it goes to NSP, but I just, like, I'm with you, if Lafayette this way, but I don't know if that, and if it goes further, it seemed like it got through all those houses. Maybe I just need some elementary sketches or whatever.
I know they've, they've passed it around, but I don't know.
Old Town's, Old Town's had a part in it, and it's, it's the city, and, uh... I think that is on the Old Town, and kind of approached the city-county about doing joint.
I know it's getting later, but if you guys wanna talk about maybe the 143 with the general welfare, and get that squared away, and the chamber, and the mattress, and then, maybe we let salary until tomorrow, I can show you my spreadsheet and send it to you, and, I don't know.
Let's just do the ones you said, and I...
We can be on here early this morning.
Oh, we won't have all this other shit.
So, general public welfare, I know we talked about changing this around last year already, we did not send letters this year to request, uh, budget numbers. Currently in the budget though, they're all still budgeted individually in there. I did receive, I think, two, maybe three requests, they are attached, so the three that have paper questions, I don't have requests attached. I'm gonna kinda throw this one to you guys.
I know the ball for funerals.
That one's, yeah, that one you have to, you have to...
Yeah, yeah, we...
I think if you're, if you're wanting to eliminate some of these, I think you need to give these agencies a heads up, I don't think...
I disagree.
Well, before I came on, I thought there was some talk, I don't know if it was you or, you know, just, just put a figure like $25,000 to earmark for, and then they have to, to request and maybe do 5,000 max to...
Oh, it's the 143 department. And it goes down to the whole list, but we won't be able to do it.
I, I, I hear from Coke and I historicals that, you know, that makes, oh, that pays for one of the, that pays for part-time employees.
I hear a lot of do, so we start off, I'll deal with do.
No, that's historic, so...
Well, it's all...
So, I'll make my statement, I made every year, and I think all of them are good organizations, but I, I just don't see government as a form to take from someone else and give to someone else. So, anyway, the only ones in health and welfare is soil conservation. I think we have to do that one, that's the only one that I wanna do.
I think crime stuff is...
Like I said, I, I think it's a great organization, but... I think it's a great organization, but, uh, I think, you know, if law enforcement wanted to pay people for crime stoppers, that'd be great.
So the reason you're seeing zeros for crime stoppers in this social society is because last year we moved those to economic development and, uh, public welfare. And they're actually invested in one twenty two.
That's where Sluice had to do that.
Yes, yes.
Crime stoppers is in economic development, dude. True.
The only things we watched in here was things that we thought were truly somehow.
I didn't remember crime stoppers being moved to there.
What is manpower services?
Is there a non-approving to?
Manpower services.
Homemaker.
Homemaker, oh.
Homemaker service.
Homemakers, yeah. Um, they'll, 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 they'll take.
Oh, that's, uh, Bill D can help in, uh.
We go through this every year and always struggle with it, but these are some services that are provided that by statute, we are allowed to pay them to provide. It's not a significant amount. We talked about putting a cap on it. I don't want to do that. My personal thing is just always in the, the amounts.
Well, this is, from what I gather, this has been a commission wishlist or whatever that it's just grown. Cause our new commissioners have picked new organizations and it's just grown.
That, that's true, but the, probably the ones you're seeing on this stage right here, other than the art council, um, have been on the list for more than ten years, I know, because they've been on here over the size of here. So, uh, I mean, I know those, those top four in soil conservation have been.
The ones when I started, homemaker healthcare, able learning, senior, and then the soil.
They have the, have the, have the.
Cap set.
And you all have the downtown services or did we vet that?
Executants. So the ones that truly have been on a long time, I don't know.
Which one?
Home, homemaker services, able learning, senior nutrition, and soil conservation. All four of us, but that's the up to fifty two more. Because that reason, you know, we could probably go, help, but they, they, uh, I was going to say, I don't know. I think it's your life.
As we said the other day, our general health and public welfare, we contribute one point two million dollars through our health department to help, help Colke County residents. I think that's more than that. But I'm just, I'm just telling you where I'm at. I just, you know, I've said it before. I think they're all good organizations and they, they all do some good. If I want to give to them personally, that's my prerogative and that's my money, but I can't take from Sam or Jeff or Debbie or anybody else. I can't take their money and give it to other people. Now, do we do some economic development and stuff like that? Well, I think that benefits everybody.
Well, there must take salute out of there, because if you're taking my money and putting it towards an R E for, Jeff said you're.
I know where you're coming.
Let's take ball out. We're just going to. How much time do we have to talk about this today? We're, we're down to about four minutes. So how mu, what all do we have for tomorrow?
So there are some of the other ones that were not there that you paid out of the economic development this year. I just put a lump sum in there. I did not break it out, but those are the ones that we actually paid in fifteen.
Why don't you do all of the adoption, maybe some of the, maybe one or two or something too?
It was, but I don't think it's any.
They not request, maybe.
I don't think they did not request this year.
And that's, I mean, that's why I'm sitting with the help.
Before getting.
Yeah, I just want, you know, we send, we send them out letters, right? I, I, from us, say we do there, just to put a lump sum that we can spend and then they have to make a request.
Can be as for economics or be as for, um, all of those items or?
I could do for both of them. Yeah, different economics too. Uh, it'd be cleaner if they'd come, you know, come to us and make the request.
I think we just need to give them some guidance, I mean, and.
Well, you send them a letter and say, hey, you know, we've got seven thousand dollars.
We did not this year.
We didn't do that.
But at the same time, we didn't say, you know, we didn't give them any guidance. So like the senior nutrition center, for example, I'm sure ten thousand dollars is a large portion of their budget.
Yeah.
So to just stop and say, nope, we're not going to do it this year. I think that you need to give them some sort of heads up to find other avenues to find those funds or, uh, something. I don't think you can just.
We can.
I, I, I agree with what you're saying to a certain extent, and I had a long discussion with a lady that's actively involved with it. She was pleading her case for the ten thousand dollars. And I, I said, I agree with you, but I said, there's a lot of people that come to the senior nutrition center and eat lunch. They could afford to go eat lunch somewhere else, but are just coming because it's a tradition.
Uh, they come because it's a social.
Well, and it's, it's two dollars or three dollars or whatever. And I said, I said, you know, are you renting that space at Capitol Mall? And of course, you know, they are, they're renting that space. So, you know, I mean, I get it. I get that they probably do a great service and probably the better service that they do is delivering meals to people they can't get them. Uh, but if you can physically get in the car and drive there, you could probably afford the five dollar meal or whatever. Uh, so why? I don't know. But I mean, what about all the, so that senior nutrition centers at the mall? What about all the other food establishments at, at the mall? I mean, we're giving them ten thousand dollars so that they can keep their prices down. Well, if I gave another food establishment ten thousand dollars, well, maybe they come over their prices too. And I could argue both sides. So I, like I said, there's, there's all kinds of deserving organizations, boys and girls club and greater organizations. But, you know, at the end of the day, you can't support them all, or maybe you can, Dad.
No, no.
Maybe you can, you know?
No, I can't.
Moneybags. But I mean, you know, I got, I got four kids to feed at home, so I can't support them all. And I think everybody else does too, you know? They're looking at, at a limited, limited amount of funds and, you know, we, we've done good to keep our taxes low. I just, this is where I'm at.
And again, she, she had already budgeted in there under two hundred thousand and obviously half of that is chamber, depending on what you want to do there.
I thought it was more.
I thought it was two.
So I think it's one would have that one, you know?
I think, yeah, I think it's one fifty one was the biggest.
Yeah, I put that second.
I agree.
So, so with those two, that would only be the forty nine, you can leave that placeholder in there until you guys really decide what you want to do. Now, those other ones that we're not going to do those, I do want to take those down. Because to me, if I specify those particular places in one forty three, I don't want to leave that in there that way. If that makes sense.
I don't think the news trivia happens. We've cut all that out because I remember that in the program.
I do want to take those out. I got the oil company to, to mount in because they are specifically made. Not that that matters, you still have to approve me cutting the jet and approving, um, signing. You have to sign a contract. I don't think. And if you definitely are not even thinking about it.
And my suggestion is that you're going to cut all of those out of there and we move popper funeral to one twenty seven and to waive this part of one forty three completely.